Oh, are you, you're in front of the screen? Uh, so the little box down below, there's a button on the left of it that says join. What? So that's different from the one that you and I looked at, right, Tony? Oh, man. And which room are you in? Yeah. That's. Is there a different screen setup in conference, in the council chambers? Oh, what about in the, in the conference room? Alyssa, can you hear me? I'm asking Alyssa if she can hear me.
Yes, I can hear you.
So Tony and them are in the council chambers, but the, the box does, that, that's with the screen is not the same one we've seen. And it doesn't have a join meeting button on it that they can find.
Uh, my only suggestion would be for Tony to call Kyle and have him walk him through. I can text Tony Kyle's phone number.
Well, see, Tony's saying that it seems like the, the box with the join button is in the, is in the, the conference room, so.
Well, you know, they, if they have to go in there, I mean, it's just, we don't have a lot of people tonight. It's just Lindsay there. You're, you're not in person. So that's one less person. Have you been getting a lot of people from the public?
Wait, hold on, Alyssa, I think they figured it out. You figured it out with the one in council chambers? Yeah, yeah, you pushed the join button. I suppose, you know, if you just can't do it on that one, if the one in the, uh, council, if the one in the, um. Well, the other thing is if the, if the, um, if the, if this, if the screen in the, um, if the screen in the, um, uh, Jesus Christ, conference room has the right box, you can meet in there. Yeah, that's, yeah, sorry. Bye. Uh, all right, Alyssa, so they're gonna call Kyle, because it, it turns out it wasn't right. Both boxes seem to be different from the ones that we used, the one that we used the other days.
Okay, does he have Kyle's cell phone, or should I text it to him?
Um, he said he was gonna call Kyle, so I assume he's got the number.
Okay. Kyle is usually very good about helping out.
Yeah, well, I'm afraid it's all my fault. I just had a really bad biorhythms today, so I think it's, uh, it's filtering through the internet down to Kingston.
I hope not. Looks like they figured it out.
Oh, good.
And then click on the camera.
Camera control?
Yep, and put it in manual.
It's not, let me do anything, the camera control is not laid up, so. It says change view options that what you want. No, it says speaker thumbnail gallery came up. That's it.
When you get out of that one, I'm like, okay.
I think I hit the start video. Camera control, hit on, now you're gonna do camera control, yeah, now what am I doing? Manual?
I can see you all.
Alrighty, I got it on manual done, I guess. We're seeing on the table up in the lower, upper, upper right hand corner. Brittany's on the screen.
Yeah, but you, yeah, yeah, but you see the whole table.
We see the whole table up in the upper little box in upper right, alright.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, get it up, thanks Kyle.
You hear me, Randy? Is there any way to move the, the, the screen a little bit, because I can't see the side of the table where the guest sits?
I don't know, man. You guys got me doing a lot here.
That's it, that's good, that's it. Now I see Lindsay.
Hey, Randy.
Hi, Rita.
Can you hear me, Randy?
I sure can. Thanks for being here, Rita.
I wasn't doing anything.
Okay, I don't know, we're waiting for.
We're not waiting for anybody right now. Um, I will let it be known that I am currently at 866 uh, Third Avenue in New York City, uh, showroom 2910. Um, since I cannot be there in person tonight. Alright, um, so we're gonna get started here with the, um, it's 6:37, I call this meeting to order. And we're gonna start off, uh, so those of you who are there, the, um, John Tu, I don't know if he told you, he sent out a, uh, a set of the variance sheets that's in the proper order, the one that was with the agenda somehow got, um, out of order. So if you want to follow along clearly, um, in the variance sheets, that's where we'll begin. Um, so the first, uh, uh, due, we're gonna start in 6772. That's programs for the aging, that's page 137.
Stadium?
If you see which one we're starting with.
Six, yeah, aging, right?
Now you, in, ready?
Okay, um, so, uh, it looks like to me that that's pretty much same as, uh, last budget. Anybody have any questions on that one?
You say 137?
Any questions on, on that one, programs for the aging? I'm having little trouble hearing you all if you're speaking to the screen.
No questions, looks like it's the same, there's no changes.
Very close, yep. Okay, uh, then we will move on to, uh, 7020, this is recreation administration, page 138. Uh, and here, of course, uh, we're looking at regular pay. And there is a significant increase here. Um, uh, about 70%, 60 something percent, 70%. So what's up with, uh, that change there, Lindsay?
Yeah, um, I'd actually like to just mention, uh, the piece about, uh, my salary. Um, I sent an email out to all the department heads in the alternate back in April. Um, the mayor had assigned me to take over, uh, parks maintenance, um, back in April, and so my, uh, my responsibilities changed at that time. Uh, prior to that, I was only responsible for the recreation portion of our department. Um, and DPW was overseeing parks maintenance, uh, and, and management. And in April, um, you know, after conversations between the mayor and DPW, uh, the mayor asked me to, uh, take over the parks maintenance portion, uh, which changed my workload significantly. And so that's the, that's the reason for the, the increase there. Um, the mayor adjusted my, my salary, um, to what my predecessor was making, uh, Kevin Gilfeather. Well, he left his position in 2020, that was the salary that he, he left at, and so the mayor adjusted my salary, uh, after giving me these assignments.
So what's that, that's the salary that Kevin Gilfeather left at, after how many years was he there?
I believe 23.
Okay.
So what does this whole figure include?
So, uh, that is, that is my salary, that is, uh, Carol Hubbard, our administrative aide, and our, um, I had proposed or requested a senior counselor.
So that would be three people.
Three, yes. Oh, wait. And, uh, yes, and then I, he hired and also requested a project manager.
Which is included in that salary?
Uh, yes.
How much is that?
That would be
Fifty-six thousand dollars.
Fifty-six, yes. Fifty-five, I think, yes.
And Lindsay, how much was your increase?
Um, so I was making, up until April, I was making 53,96. And then, uh, once I was assigned the maintenance portion, it was adjusted to 68, or 63,8,002.
She added an increase of like fifteen thousand dollars. Project manager, what is that gonna detail, what's the duties of the, the project managers?
Say that again?
What's gonna be the duties of the project manager?
Yeah, so the, the, the project manager position, um, you know, as, as many of you know, um, recently our department, uh, has taken on a, a handful of projects. Um, the, the largest one being Deep Stadium, uh, currently that's, that's being managed by Ruthan in the grants department. Um, with Kristen's departure, um, as grant, as director of grants, um, you know, the mayor has, has assigned Deep Stadium to our department, uh, Parks and Rec. And, uh, it's, it's an 18 million dollar project, uh, Ruthan is, is going to stay involved, uh, regardless, but, um, you know, it's, it's just very clear that a, a project of this size, um, warrants a lot of attention and a lot of, a lot of assistance and, uh, team effort. And so that's, that's the largest project that, uh, that the project manager would, would be working on. Um, they would be managing the, uh, uh, grant, grant finances, uh, tracking, um, working and coordinating with, uh, the grants department as well as the comptroller's office.
Will they be looking for new grants, or is that Ruthan?
Uh, well, usually, uh, in coordination with Ruthan, um, look around CFA season, uh, this year I worked with Kristen and Ruthan to, uh, uh, to develop the, the maintenance equipment grant for, uh, the rail trust. Um, you know, there's, there's, there's a lot of opportunity, uh, for this position to work with other departments, um, and, and try to work on future projects, uh, but more importantly, the current ones that, that we're dealing with, CDVG projects as well. Um, you know, those, those projects tend to add up over time, and currently, we do not have any, uh, individual that has those responsibilities in their job description. Um, and so I would like to, to ensure that my department has what it needs to be able to handle the current responsibilities as well as in future ones that, that are going to be put in our department.
Lindsay, do you have a sense of why, um, this wouldn't be appropriate for the engineer, the engineering department, because a lot of this is gonna be renovation, right?
Uh, yeah, there's, there is an engineering portion with this, and, um, a lot of, that's, that's kind of why Ruthan calls this a team effort. Are you speaking just about Deets?
Yeah.
Yeah, um, engineering department will be part of it as well, um, but, you know, you've got the design phase, you have the, the implementation, there's, there's a lot of moving pieces to this one that I'm still learning.
Remember what Brittany's suggesting is that, uh, engineering all, often takes that role.
The whole, of the whole?
Well, no, the project management of the renovation.
Oh, I mean, I, it was, it was originally under the grants department, um, I, I don't think it was ever assigned to engineering, so.
Hey, Lindsay?
Yes.
Now, you, actually, you rattled up a lot of duties for this position. Now, I, uh, I don't think I'm gonna be putting myself out on a limb here to say that at least for a substantial amount of time, the stadium project is gonna be pretty much a full-time job, so who's what's going on with all these other duties that, that you were citing, that's number one? Do you, do you have staff? I mean, it sounds like a lot of things to do.
It is.
And then that, I guess, you know, in moving down the road, I hope I'm still alive when the stadium is completed.
Yes.
So, this position will still remain there, I presume, and even after the stadium is completed.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's my hope. Um, I, I don't think that, you know, when it comes to, um, improvements to our parks and the commitment to enhancing our community, I don't think that that, um, that task is ever done. I think that, you know, these projects will, will only continue to grow, the, uh, the list will only continue to grow. Uh, what I don't want to see happen is the list continue to grow and nothing is being taken off of it. Um, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm fearful of delays. Um, I'm, I'm worried that some of my staff will, um, end up working out of title. Um, I'm, I'm trying my best to make sure that we manage all of the tasks that are coming our way. Now, the Andy and Ricky kitchen, that's another one that, that I've been taking on, um. Uh, but the building in itself, as you and I talked about, Steve, there's, that's gonna be a, a pretty, a pretty big project as well. Um, unless we can actually begin with.
Yeah, that's another, another lifetime project that I'm hoping to be around with.
That's a big one.
That's huge, yeah.
So is there a reason why your department was given the Deep Stadium rental?
Um, well, our, our department oversees, um, Deep Stadium right now, with, with the 50/50 split between the school district. Um, you know, it, it's part of our facilities, um, I, I think that it was, you know, I can't really speak for the mayor, but I think it was, uh, just deemed as one of the parks and rec facilities.
Shooting under that umbrella?
Right, yeah. But again, with the, with the, the thought that, you know, engineering and the grants department, those, you know, those people would still remain involved.
Yeah, they're project manager on this scene here, in the, uh, medical. That's a new position, is that family coverage that's theory for the medical? Page 2139? Yes, so why do we put the family coverage, we already have the persons in the end, we already know persons in here?
Uh, no, we typically have major positions, we are conservative, we estimate.
Okay, I see, okay. Alright, thank you.
Uh, is there anything else on the, the Deets Stadium and that, that, um, uh, project manager position?
So you're before a stadium is project manager, there's a position that's gonna be part for a long, lifelong, like this deep stadium, I think I can sort of say.
Oh, yeah, there's, Deep Stadium is just the largest, uh, of, I believe, John, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe it's the largest, uh, project that, that we have at this time, um, and so it's, that's just the biggest one that, that has recently been put in our department. Um, and without the, the proper capacity and the, the proper staffing, it's, it's, you know, it's just really and, uh, you know, but as far as other projects, I mean, there's, you know, there's, there's an entire list that we are trying to work off of, um, and what we're learning is that many of these projects are, you know, more costly than originally estimated. Um, I know some projects are yet tackled off of the, uh, direct trust fund, um, list, CDVG is another, another one, that can usually, every year, there's new projects added to that. Um, you know, I'm, I'm trying not to bite off more than we can chew, uh, but that means things, you know, that means that there's things that require improvements that, that need it, our, you know, infrastructure and some of these facilities and, you know, our buildings, you know, it's, it's not gonna get better, um, you know, and I, I'd like to, to be able to put what's needed in our department to, to take care of some of these pressing issues.
Alright, thank you.
Uh, Lindsay, so I'm sorry, can we go back one second? Um, so I understand that the increase in your salary, uh, occurred beginning early last year, and that was because of moving a fair amount of, um, activity over from DPW. Did some of that activity move back to DPW, or has that remained consistent?
Uh, there, starting like here, there are some items that are going back to DPW, uh, their responsibilities that, um, you're fall under the buildings and grounds line, which is a, is a line out of DPW's budget. Um, I don't know how many years ago it was assigned to Parks and Rec, um, things such as sidewalks, um, trash removal on the streets. Uh, these are items that don't fall within the parks, they don't fall within the trails, they don't fall within any of our buildings. Um, you know, I know there's a capacity issue with DPW and having packers out and trucks out on the weekends, but, um, you know, it is, those responsibilities are taken away from being able to address our, our parks and our trails, um, which, you know, are becoming more and more popular, especially since the pandemic, uh, people are utilizing our facilities more and more, um, and, you know, we don't have nearly as many staff as DPW, and so we're trying to take care of the, uh, locations and parks and, and green spaces that are, that are within our responsibility.
Okay. Any other questions relating to either, um, the, the Lindsay salary or any of the proposed new positions?
Um, yeah, the, on the, under the salaries, the senior account clerk?
Yes.
I noticed that's going down. Why is that?
Senior account clerk?
Am I reading that right?
I think it's important with, you know, it's a little important.
Oh, is that, okay, is that comes out of well, no, that's, no, that's senior, not principal. So. It's what?
I think it's just funded for a portion of the year. Um, it's not for January start date.
So then that, it'll go back up to?
Yeah, I'll take a look, Rita, for the, uh, right, so the following year, you would expect a, a full, a full salary.
So 2022, they had it at 41115, and then the recommended 21875.
So this is, um, this is a senior account clerk, uh, the funding would start August 1st for that position. So it was the 1st, yes.
Is that gonna, the recommended salary is definitely, is gonna be same as the 41115? Or is, what is that going to be?
It's, well, it's the same, it's the same, uh, well, requested, right, the requested is, um, was based upon the, the original, the CSC salary schedule. I believe this recommended salary is based upon the mayor's proposed salaries for that position. But it's still on August 1st start date.
I see, I see. Okay. Do you know, do you want to happen to know why that?
Of, of why?
The mayor, yeah.
Um, of why
CSC, they recommended one, and then he proposed, what, almost half of that?
Well, he, he proposed, uh, delaying the store. Pardon me, I, I, I don't wanna speak for the mayor, but some, sometimes decisions to, uh, delay a start date can be due to financial constraints.
Okay.
What about the administrative aide, this notice line as well? Why is that on the budget points, it's, uh?
That position is only funded through August 31st.
Administrative aide, what do you want to do, August 31st? If anyone has that, August 31st.
Um, as of right now, there's no funding for that position after August 31st.
So you see that, so the, what's administrative aide, what is, what is, what is their duty for his duties?
Uh, so Carol is the, is our administrative aide, um, she is, she primarily runs our, our office, she maintains our, um, financial records, uh, she's She handles a portion of our payroll, manages the accruals for our staff. She takes care of registration for our programs, mostly online, answers our phone, deals with our traffic.
Okay, how do you do your follow-up on somebody else?
Well, so I had proposed adding a senior account clerk because that position deals with, can manage a higher level of financial activity. And with all the grants that our office is starting to process and, yeah, there's, there's definitely a need for that.
So one's going to get a senior account clerk?
Seven.
So the eighth going to get a senior account clerk?
No, no, I agree. That position, I don't think she's on the list for senior account clerk.
I don't think you heard his question. He said, so you're losing the administrative aide?
Oh, yes.
But you get a senior account clerk? So the senior account clerk then is going to be doing some of the administrative aides?
Yes.
Does it do these?
My understanding is that everyone can work down.
All right, thank you.
Sorry, I can't hear you.
I'm separating from what we're talking about, sorry.
All right, is there anything left regarding 7020 that anybody wants to talk about? We good with that? Okay, I neglected something. So Lindsay, I'm going to ask you to hold on for just a minute. We received from the Water Department the request for doing the tax re-levees. This is something that we do every year where we add unpaid bills from the Water Department onto property owners' taxes. So this was sent out today. Let me see. John, did that come from you or from Alyssa?
I think that came from Alyssa. And I'm looking for when that came, but it was within the last several days. It came on Friday, Randy.
On Friday?
Friday, yes. And it came, I'm sorry, it came from Andrea. It came from Andrea to you and I.
Oh, right, accepted, okay. I'm going to forward this then to everyone on committee.
Nice shot, right, ready?
What's that?
Nothing, like seeing the cigar in your mouth.
All right, so I sent the item, but it's from the Kingston Water Department. And it says, pursuant to the Charter of the City of Kingston, Chapter 16-5 and Section 395-29 of the Administrative Code, water charges shall be a lean upon real estate until paid. And the event that water rents are in arrears for more than three months, the water rents and interest and charges thereof shall become a lean upon the real estate against which the water rents shall have been laid or levied. And it says a breakdown of the 2022 general taxes is showed. So for water, there's a total of $346,306.57. And for sewer charges, it's a charge of total of $417,591.74.
These are in arrears then?
Yes.
How far back is this historical, before 2021?
This is what is owed. I don't know how long the time period is.
If you want to see your process, John. So whatever, you know, historically, the city annually re-levees, we have a cutoff point, and the delinquent sewer bills as of that, they are re-leveed onto the following year's tax roll. So it should just be for, it should just be for one year of, one year of.
And do we typically collect all that money?
Well, it's, once again, it's re-leveed onto the taxes, so to the extent the taxes are paid, yes, we would collect it all. It would just be a leave of property.
Thank you.
I don't have a committee report with this. John, could you write something up real fast?
Sure.
In the meantime, if anybody wants to look at it, I sent it to your emails, your City of Kingston email addresses. So while John is doing that, we will be moving next to, in our interview with Lindsay, we'll be moving to
7110.
7110 Parks, that's page 140.
Right, I'm sending it to you now, Randy.
Thank you.
Where are we going?
Page 140.
Okay.
All right, so the description reads, "Request authorization to re-levee unpaid water and sewer bills totaling $781,560.26 under the city's 2022 property tax bills." Do I have a motion? Steve Shabbat? Do I have a second? Don Tolloman? Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by raising thumb or hand. All against? Thank you. All right, so we can move on to the next item here with the Parks budget. Any questions on this one?
There's another question. Lindsay, expenses, expense lines?
Yes.
426 and 472. The new guidelines for this budget.
So if you recall last year, a lot of these items were moved into that Buildings and Grounds line.
Okay.
DPW was, at the beginning of the year, was maintaining, managing the parks maintenance. So a lot of those were moved over and now we, there's a change, we moved everything back over.
Okay.
Yeah.
Nice, please, Dan. It looks like you need three additional workers. Are you requesting?
Yes, I requested for new laborers and the HMO position.
Yes.
What's HMO?
Heavy machine equipment operator.
Yeah.
Currently, we don't have, we don't have that title in our department, which, you know, kind of focus or forces us to lean on some other departments when we need, when we need that assistance. And we're really trying to kind of turn ourselves into a self-sufficient department.
Lindsay, do any of these positions have, like, specific duties or they're just going to join a general workforce?
Well, the HMO would be anytime we have to operate that heavy machinery, we would be able to do so within our own department.
But there's not a position, the laborers.
Oh, no, they'll just be, they're just intended to be average laborers. Yeah.
Do you have any, any plans to dedicate anyone to the median going down Broadway? Has that been a subject of conversation?
So my understanding is that would be dealt with under DPW.
Okay.
Yeah, with the, with streets, yeah.
Lindsay, are you in charge of maintaining how many buildings?
Six.
Like five buildings?
Say that again?
You maintain five buildings? I mean, is that, is your crew maintaining five buildings in the city?
Oh, like the, our community centers, so the?
Yeah.
Andy Murphy Neighborhood Center, Everhodge Center, the Rondell Neighborhood Center are our three facilities.
How many?
Three.
Three. And you maintain them totally?
Yes.
If you needed a renovation of a room painting, how do you get, how do you get that, how do you get that room painted? Let's say you have an office, you have an office for our painting, how do you get that painted redid?
How do I get my office painted or any office? I would, I would communicate that with our maintenance supervisor, Steve Freer.
And would any company do that for you?
Yes, unless it would have to do with any, any kind of lead or asbestos type of, anything that required an extra certificate or license, but yes.
And how about maybe some new furniture in this office?
To move it, you mean?
Buying furniture, putting the budget number to some where else in the city.
Well, we would probably purchase it through our, our office, our administrative office.
Okay, thank you.
And did anyone ask you about this $25,000 for contracted services?
It's a big jump.
Yeah, that's, that's.
That's what you asked?
Yeah, that's what Tony asked. So that, that money was, was originally in this line in 2019. It was then moved, or excuse me, in 2020. Then when DPW was maintaining parks maintenance, it was moved into 1625. And so now it's all being moved back now that I'm responsible for parks maintenance.
And what does it cover?
Wait, say again?
What does it cover? What are the services?
472 contracted services. So if, if we need to call an electrician, if we need a plumber, any kind of contracted vendor that we would have to hire out if our, if our staff can't, can't complete a task or don't have the proper equipment or the license for it, we would most likely call a vendor, an outside source.
At this point, you've got two lines of contracted services. You have that 472 and then above, you've got the 301.
So that's for, that's for capital projects?
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's typically used for, for any kind of capital, any capital project. Whereas the 472 is for day-to-day type of stuff, yeah.
Lindsay, are you, does your responsibility cover cleaning up cat, instill the sidewalks on North Orange Street and North Fair Street? Do you do that?
Currently, yes. As of 2022, that will be going back to DPW.
That will be in the year?
Back at DPW.
In January?
Yes.
Right now, you, that's your, your.
Well, during the summer months, and I think we had a phone call about that, during the summer months, our staff were responsible for cleaning the sidewalks every first and third, Thursday and Friday of the, of the month. We started to get complaints from neighbors about the, about the sounds of it, the noise early in the mornings. We also got complaints that the bluestone was breaking off. We reached out to other departments for assistance with their equipment. They were unable to provide it, and so we were unable to come up with another solution to clean it properly.
To, to, to date, from then to now?
Correct.
So the sidewalks up there don't get cleaned?
They, I don't believe they get cleaned during these months anyway. This is something that usually occurs during the summer. And so I don't know off the top of my head when the last time was that they were cleaned, but I believe since we last spoke, that, that has still remained the same.
Wow, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, anything else related to Parks? If not? Go ahead.
When someone contracts a building and they come into town and we, they, they give funds, you collect funds from them, don't you, Parks?
There is a fee, the rec fees for, and I, I believe that process goes through the planning department. We are usually asked to give a recommendation on how much to collect. There's usually a range of how much that we should be charging for these, for these rec fees. I believe it only applies if, if the location in question is not providing their own recreational facilities. And so it's supposed to kind of take into consideration new individuals utilizing our park space. And so there's a fee that is usually charged to those contractors, those developers, and accepted into the direct trust fund. That's how that money comes to be.
How much did you collect that?
I don't, I don't really.
Is that in your budget?
I don't think that.
How do you get your money?
I.
Direct trust fund?
Yeah, I don't.
It's, it's part of the city budget. Oh, Lindsay, that's nothing to do with that.
Yeah.
That's, that's.
Yeah.
It's generally. What's that?
Plan.
Okay, that's fine, I'm sorry.
All right, anything else on that one? If not, then we'll move to 7140 Playgrounds. This is page 142.
Do you think all playgrounds located in the city?
City, city.
So these are all playgrounds like Kelkner's? Trying to think some, the other one on?
The Amber.
Big Amber.
So really Playground, this line is mostly used for our summer camp program, our seasonal staff there, like that's where that. But yes, it is, these lines for general materials and supplies are used towards, towards those.
Are my playgrounds a bit? Because if you don't list all the parks underneath here, do you? I'm seeing that falls underneath there.
Say that again?
You don't have any parks. You got, are you in charge of parks of DPW's?
I, that's, that's what the new change, yes, that's.
Are you a sign?
Yes.
How many, so?
We have thirteen, we have thirteen parks, but not every, every park has a playground.
Correct.
Yeah.
Then where were those, where were any of that, if you didn't tear all this stuff from the parks, where did it fall in? Does it fall in this playground budget?
Some of it, I mean, depending on what the, if there's like a repair, that might come from seven one ten. Again, a lot of this is used for our summer camps.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. Lindsay, can you just speak quickly on why are you trying to devise a parks rec trying to become? If you said that, I'm not sure maybe I've heard economists from the DPW, but why aren't you working together?
Oh, we still work together.
And I really do, but why are you trying to separate somebody?
Well, I, I didn't, I didn't separate us. We, you know, the mayor had had us kind of doing a collaborative effort in terms of parks maintenance and recreation. You'd have to speak to him as to why he wanted to put it back, all under parks rec. What I was speaking to was about, you know, equipment and staffing. DPW has their own priorities. They have their responsibilities and tasks that they have to, to accomplish, but so do we. And so if we need to, to, we need to borrow some piece of equipment and they're using it for paving, we're kind of in a tough spot because we're still expected to get, get done whatever we need to get done. You know, and it's not, it's not cheap to, to hire out contractors. And if we have the staff to, to complete a project or, or be able to operate certain machinery, which we do, we just want to make sure that we have the appropriate titles for them to be working out of.
So then, you're going, I'm sorry, but, sorry. Um, so then when you had hired the, or your proposed budget, you want the HMVO?
Yeah.
That means that you're also, capital project, you're going to have to get machines then, or?
Well, so that is listed in our, um, in the capital plan. We also, um, we also listed those items or requested, excuse me. Uh, we wrote a CFA grant for that equipment as well. This, this equipment will allow us to take care of our trails better, have the proper equipment to be able to do so. And so this is the kind of equipment that the HMVO will be.
So you're good, so you'll have a grant to, to purchase that equipment or?
Well, we already, yeah, we went for that with the CFA. We haven't heard yet. Okay. That's.
So you're waiting to hear that?
Correct. I think December is when they'll, yeah.
Lindsay, do we all need sweetener for the trails, the motorized suite?
That, that's where we're, that's where we're put on the capital plan.
We don't, we don't want one, now?
Um, I don't know if it's the same size that we're requesting. There's certain, there's certain attachments that come with these pieces of equipment. I know we have, we have loaders. Some of them have been in the shop most of the summer. They're older, they're older pieces, which again is why we, we often have to borrow DPW's equipment.
Yeah, I thought we bought DPW a small, um, street three for the trail for the round trip. No, I thought it was like, I thought it was some type of, like a maybe garden park or something like that, but I'm not sure exactly what it's attached to. You know, I'm talking, yeah, I think last year, like last year, first. I thought it was on the Capitol. I can't, up my head. It's trail, maybe they came and requested, I'm not sure exactly what it's called. They say they need that small piece and put the media on the trails because that they could, you know. Right. Who maintains the trails now?
We do, parks.
Right. So how do we kind of get in there?
Uh, well, so the, uh, the, the ballards are, they are removable with a key. But again, we're, it's taking our staff a lot of time to walk the trails, to clean them, and can't reach certain.
Do you do brickyard two, the trail behind Kevin?
No, brickyards, yeah.
You don't do the brickyard track?
No.
Who maintains that?
I'm assuming the owners of the brickyard.
No, I think he's referring to the Empire State Trail.
Oh, the state trail, yes.
The Empire State Trail that goes through the brickyards.
We manage up until, we don't go beyond that, we go.
Up until where?
To the brickyard's property.
Right.
We don't go on the property.
Yeah, Sina Hudson manages the, the, uh, the trail from, um, Brickyards in, in north. I don't know who manages the piece in front of, um, Brickyards though. Whether we do or they do. Where's Sina Hudson?
Which section are you talking about?
You know, you first, you, um, first at the gate, walking around Brickyards. From there, you got like a quarter mile before you actually hit the park, where Sina Hudson is in control. But the road path along Brickyards, I don't know who actually is keeping that up.
I'm presuming that, because I've been down there a few times and I see, I see brickyard personnel.
It's clean.
Maintaining that and painting the fence, that big long fence.
That's their fence.
Yeah, so, I mean, I see them.
Yeah, I mean, they're probably picking up garbage too, the trail.
Yeah, so I'm, I mean, I don't ask them, but I'm presuming they're, they're brickyard employees.
Yeah.
So Lindsay, what, what do we have? We have thirteen parks?
Yes.
Yeah. This is, it's a lot. You know, it's a lot to maintain all these parks and God forbid there be a piece of paper laying, somebody's going to call. I know I get, I'm sure everybody else does. You know, we get frequent calls about, and, you know, one of my favorites is, well, you know, why does Cantine Field look so good? I said, they have one park up there, you know, we have thirteen.
Good answer.
It's, it's a big duty, so, you know, certainly, you know, I know, I certainly want to keep you well-staffed to make sure this, this is done. Um, you know, this is, this is a big drawing card for Kingston to have such a, a beautiful system of parks. And I think they're, I think they're very well maintained. You know, you can't control them 24/7. I mean, you know, you pick stuff up and two hours later, there's, there's garbage laying all over, you know. And I, I've been involved long enough to, you know, to see the stuff people just take to the park and dump. Refrigerators and, you know, every, I went to a cleanup one day in Asper Park. I picked up six spare tires, a TV, a huge TV stand that people just dump, dump there.
Yeah.
So, you know, somebody has to, somebody has to take care of all that. We can't just let that, let that stuff lag.
Absolutely. And Rita, you're right, there are, there are, it's definitely room for improvement in a lot of ours.
Well, I mean, if we were to talk about comparisons, but I understand, I certainly understand the responsibility that you have down in your department. And also I understand that it's got, public has got to help with some of these things as well, so. So I get it, but there are some disparities in how certain parks are kept versus other parks in the city of Kingston.
You know, we are trying to prep back and make sure that each park gets the same, same level of care. And so I, I personally feel that, you know, one of the, one of the biggest things that I do for my staff and I try with them is sometimes they feel very worn out. This was a busy summer. We recently taken on the responsibility of managing the stage for, for large-scale events. My understanding is next year, there's, I believe, already sixteen applications in. That's, that is work that is new to our department.
Want to use the stage?
Yes, for the, um, the, the one with Rachel Kingston and the, some of her payrolls office. And that's, that's a new, that, that's a new challenge for our, for our department and operating something of that size. And, you know, it's, it's new responsibilities on weekends for events. And, you know, it's, I know that, that our staff would benefit greatly from having some additional support in the field.
I just wanted to, so speaking of the parks, now Governor Clinton Park, I know that's not technically, the city of Kingston does not maintain that.
No, I'm telling you, you're telling.
Uh, that's what I said, Governor Clinton.
Governor, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Window work.
So. Yes.
See what I meant? We, so city of Kingston, do we maintain?
We do maintain it. Um, there's, I think when we spoke about this, there's any, any changes or upgrades to that part.
Has to go through?
Yes.
Okay.
And, uh, you know, we, um, the, there's the Mr. Garden Club, but also the Academy Room Committee.
Right.
But yes, our.
So we just, we maintain it as far as cleanliness.
Mowing, yeah, mowing, uh, emptying the trash, but, um, you know, there's, there's more than needs to happen in that part, the beautification stuff that's usually done by volunteers whenever, you know, planting the flowers.
Right, right.
Um, yeah, but, but it is still one of our, one of our spaces.
Lindsay would be responsible for replacing the benches in there because they're in pretty ratty shape.
Yeah, I think I spoke to you about that.
Yes, we, it's, it's been included as the next round of CPG projects. I believe up to thirteen benches and four new trash receptables and trash recycle.
All right, great.
Great.
All right, do you need something else on parks?
It was a project, years ago, it was torn down. Then the property was beaded to caretakers, and that's, that's the academy briefing. Somehow, you know, that you can get on to that, you know what I'm saying? It's like a war of people that are caretakers for the property. And they plant, they plant the trees, they just plant like a beautiful tree there to go back, right behind, to the right of the bus stop, and just plant that, and lights on that. And the fountain was just, was put in by, by these same people.
Yeah.
The hedges behind, statues, all those, all, you know, a lot of the, a lot of the, they do, you know.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And you, and on, on how, on a cleanup day, you'd see them all in there.
Yeah, I'm glad the benches is in the, is in the works for next year.
All right, then let's move on. The next item is seven one four one. This is Rondell Center, page 143. Um, so Lindsay, I'm looking at, um, the, uh, position here of rec leader. And this is getting, this position's getting a raise of $5,740, which is more than 10%.
Yeah.
So can you tell me what the basis is for that 10% greater, 10% increase in salary?
Um, I, I believe that's part of the mayor's proposal for the increase in wages for CSEA employees.
Did he speak to you about that increase?
Uh, he mentioned that there was going to be a citywide increase.
Did he ask for advice on that?
No.
Increase for that position?
He doesn't ask me for advice on, on citywide policies.
Um, and have you ever provided a performance review of that individual?
Um, yeah, actually I have. With Andrew, yes.
I'm sorry, with what?
I, I have, with Andrew. That's the, the rep leader that you're discussing.
Uh huh. And is that something that you actually wrote down and, and provided to him?
No, just in meetings, we, we have conversations about responsibilities and, and outcomes, how to improve things. Yeah.
Okay, so I'm not sure that counts as a specific performance review, but you talked to him fairly frequently, laying out goals and.
Oh, yes.
At some meeting.
Absolutely.
Other questions?
Are you required to answer?
Um, I don't know that required, but I think, I think any department head should stay in touch with their, with their staff and check in and make sure that everybody's on the same page about goals and accomplishments.
So have, have you had one, a performance review?
Um, not formal.
Not, not since you've been in this position?
I don't think in my previous position either.
No.
Under Kevin or under the mayor?
No, no.
Anything else then for the Rondell Center? Uh, if not, then we'll move on to the Midtown Center. This is seven one four two, page 145.
And could I just mention, this year will be the 50th anniversary of your Rondell.
It will, yes.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Fifty years.
We got fireworks going out for it?
Perhaps, if someone could throw some money our way, maybe.
It's in there. Didn't you see that fireworks?
I tried to hide that one.
Talk to Pat O'Reilly, he's got all that retirement money.
Lindsay, what's user fees?
User fees, um.
Oh, the people that want to use the center?
Yes, so there is, yeah, so when people rent things, yeah.
All right.
All right, um. So Midtown Center, any questions on that one?
Alan, if you may, that one's going up. I've been out for hours. One is right.
That position is vacant, so my assumption is the mayor's bringing that one up to the same level as the other position?
That's, that's not vacant any longer. We did hire a rec leader. He started in, um, November, early November.
Who was it?
His name's Chris, Chris Conlon.
Chris Conlon?
Yeah. He's great.
So Lindsay, I had a question. We've been doing this since, but it was said vacant here.
Yeah.
November 22nd, you start?
November 1st.
November 1st. And how high, what's the, uh? Seven to 28% increase.
How much?
28%, I did my calculation, right?
Wow, that's nice.
How long, what's that? The, uh, rec, uh, rec, uh, 15.
28%.
I did my math right. It was 41, 115, now it's 52,5, like, 145. So if I do the math, maybe I can.
This is all in line with the proposed budget, the raises that the mayor is recommending, right?
Yeah.
Uh, do you know, do you know offhand, Lindsay, any of your CSEA employees, any other ones getting a 28% increase?
I mean, I didn't, I haven't done the math on, on what it came out to be, but I believe all of our rec leaders are, they're, they are on the same, um, grade. I can't, I'm trying to just see. So I believe theirs would be somewhat similar.
So you're saying that they all come in on the same grade?
No, well, the rec leaders, they're, if they're part of the same, I think it's grade, grade 14 maybe. And so all three of them would start at the same, yeah.
So, so that's regardless of longevity or anything, they all still was there, start on the same.
Well, and then there's, I mean, currently the way it is, then there's steps. So Andrew, for example, who's been with us since 2016 and 2017, is that a higher step than Chris, who just started in, in?
But there won't be steps anymore according to the mayor's new plan.
Yeah, that's important that I've been, that would have needed.
Right, so he'll be just almost the same as Andrew.
He will.
Oh, he's the same as Andrew, yeah.
They'll all make the same money, right?
Yeah.
So the pay scale for rec leaders is currently 41, 115 to 47, 980 at the top step. Uh, that would all change to 52,500, the mayor's proposal.
And Lindsay, how long has Andrew been at Rondell Center?
2016.
Yeah, I think it's 2016. He was, um, he was part-time up until 2020.
So 2020 started full-time?
Full, yes, full-time, it's 2020.
It's been there one, one year.
Well, I mean, he's still.
But he's, yeah.
He's been here since 2016.
Yeah.
He's been working since 2016.
Right, full-time.
All right.
Yes, it's just, it's weird that someone coming in will be making the same pay as someone that's been there six, seven, eight, 10, 15 years.
Yeah.
It's just, it's hard to, harder. It's just, it's hard to, hard to grasp that.
Hey, John?
With the longevity that I've been, I've been discussing.
Longevity is an annual payment. It's not like, it's, to me, I don't, I, I think that, I don't think it's the same thing.
Not added to your salary?
No, it's an annual, it was a one-time annual payment. It's not, it's just not the same.
Oh, it's an annual payment, right?
The longevity, yes.
And if you get a thousand dollars longevity, every year you get a thousand dollars.
Yeah, but it's not the same, it's not the same as if.
A step.
It's not the same. If I'm coming in, if you, you've been on your job for twenty-five years, Patrick.
Yep.
You're making seventy-two thousand dollars and I'm coming in first year and I'm gonna make the same as you? It just doesn't seem.
I don't know if I'd be, uh, so.
I'm just wondering how.
I don't know how I understand that.
Yeah, I'm wondering how, how employees, how employees feel about that. I can't, I can't imagine that's good for morale. I just can't. I know, I, it would bother me personally. It would bother me. So I'm just trying to grasp my mind around.
You know, at your skill, at your skill level, at your, at your level, somebody coming in and doing that is tough, but you know, some, somebody who's, you know, up, you know, the next level up, you know, that's okay, but you're right, Rita. If it's, if they're at, if you're at a certain level and somebody else just comes in and takes, it's, you know, it's, I would imagine it's demoralizing a little, right?
Sorry, John? John, so, uh, i- if with this new pay scale then, uh, so suppose these two folks are getting paid fifty-two, fifty. I believe there's gonna be seven grades now. Which grade would they be? Would they be at the very top grade?
Um, uh, no, uh, the top grade is a sixty, I believe sixty-five thousand. The next grade down would be sixty, then fifty-five, then fifty-two, five. I believe they would be, they're right in the middle.
Okay, and so what, what would be the criteria for them then to move up to the next grade?
You'd have to be in a different position. Uh, under the mayor's proposal, each grade is, so each position is assigned a grade, so you would have to get promoted to a higher grade or a higher, a higher level position or a different position that would be at a, at a higher pay level. So for an example, uh, you know, a labor is a different, uh, pay level, you know, if we're talking about, say, like, public workers, maybe it's an example. Might be, a labor might be a different pay level than a driver.
So the labor, so as the contractor, as the laborers, will always be a different con, uh, different pay level than the drivers, right? If the contract, they only get thirty-three percent or something, right?
There's, they said, there's several different pay levels. There's multiple positions at every pay level, so there are promotional opportunities within those pay levels, but obviously, as you, as we've talked about, you know, the old, the old scale was eighteen grades at six steps per grade. This is seven grades with no steps, so it's, you know, a lot of, a lot of condensing.
So somebody in the old scale, the current one rather, somebody in that scale each year or has, in a sense, something to look forward to in terms of increased income because of the steps within each grade, right?
Just, just for five years after that now.
Just for five years, John?
Two steps, so there's eighteen steps. No, there's, there's only six steps within their grade, so a laborer would, whatever position you're at, you get increases. You go from step one, you start at step one, after your first anniversary, you move to step two, following anniversary, you step three, all the way to step six. But once you're at step six, you're, you're done.
Unless, unless.
So, so, I think it's a, it's a higher meeting, but basically, a step, a, a, a five-year laborer would make the same as a thirty-year laborer. Right now in the city of Kingston, regardless of the mayor's proposals, except, except for the longevity, that would be the separate.
It's kind of happening already.
Right, it's different, like, say, like, the teaching where they have a lot of steps, right?
Yeah, twenty-six steps.
Yeah, it's, 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 it's much different. It's, it's very simplified.
Yeah, no, I didn't know.
Six steps.
And you start at just six steps, because that sounds very much like the plan you're having now with the seven.
It, it's, well, it's, it's six steps, but it's, you start at one, so you, you get, you get raises for five steps.
And then you're at the top, you're just.
After that, you're just getting cost of living.
Like everybody else with longevity?
Just cost of living and longevity.
And then you get longevity. When does he get longevity, basically?
The same thing, after five years, so after you get to the top step, this top step, if you're great, then longevity kicks in.
How, how often do you get longevity?
Well, you get it once a year, and then that, longevity is also like, it, almost like in steps. You know, when you first get longevity, it's at a minimum amount, and then every, uh, number of years it goes up.
How many dollars a year until it goes up, John?
Uh, I haven't shown.
Is it like at, is it like at ten, twenty, thirty years?
Yeah, it's basically like five-year increments, almost. I, I, I haven't.
Yeah, and then after, after, from what I understand, after so many years, there is like a face payment.
Yeah.
Thirty, thirty, that's, with the thirty-one years, that's what you get right now. Can you hit the max? Since now, I think it's, uh, I think it's, oh, I want to say twenty-one, something.
Yeah, it's the thirty-one years.
Yeah. Twenty-one hundred, max? Thirty-one years. That's what they get on top of the, on top of their bank.
So somebody who's got twenty-seven years doesn't get that, but they get some other longevity right, but.
Yeah.
But the max is like, I think, I, I can, I can tell you, uh, because I, I think, uh, we, that's just. Yeah, I can, I can give you those skills if you want. What's a, what's a, what's a person who just got five years, get a thousand?
Nine hundred.
Nine hundred. So, so it starts at nine hundred, uh, the beginning of year eleven, it starts at nine hundred after five years. Beginning of your eleventh year, it goes to eleven hundred. Beginning of sixteenth year, it goes to thirteen fifty. Other five years later, it goes to fifteen fifty. Five years later, it goes to seventeen hundred. Then it tops out at twenty-one hundred.
Yeah, I got a pretty.
Okay.
So then with the steps, John, um, you can explain the steps to me again, like, so he, the, the mayor wants to propose seven steps now.
Seven, seven grades.
Seven grades.
So.
Oh, without any steps?
Seven grades, without steps, any grades.
So then you have, I'm sorry, with what?
Without any steps in that grade.
Within the grade, so then you would just go from grade to grade to grade to grade.
No, you would stay within, you would stay within that grade unless you got promoted to a different job, a different position.
Different position, which is at another grade.
Correct, right. So the difference in terms of the annual raises from where we're at now to this proposal, the difference is those five, your first five years. Your first five years in the current proposal, or in the current contract, you get raises based upon steps within your grade. That the mayor's proposal takes out.
Takes that out, right.
It brings up the minimum pay and actually.
But then that's it. Firstly, then that would be it, right, within that grade.
Right, and then you.
Unless, unless.
Your other options, yeah, your other options would be promotion and obviously longevity is the difference, but.
Right.
Longevity will still occur with the seven, seven steps, though, would be seven steps.
Long, longevity still occurs, um, you know, promotional opportunities, I, you'd have to, I'd have to spend a few more minutes on it, but in, in the current proposal, because there's a more significant pay difference between each grade, you know, then, because right now, if you look at the current salary scale, with eighteen grades, there's some grades that the salary level's very little difference from one grade to the next. Um, and there's a couple of cliffs in there, but, um, in this seven-grade system, then, you know, the cliffs are more significant, right? You go from fifty to fifty-two, five, to fifty-five, to sixty, to sixty-five, so, you know, when you do get a promotion, it's a generally a significant financial.
Okay. Basically, that's a young baby that you're about to enter.
Great, so, um, any more questions on that? All right, thank you for all that, John. Let's move to, um, the next item, seven one four three. This is the Hodge Center, one forty-seven, page one forty-seven. Lindsay, I'm assuming there's no, um, uh, uh, salaries involved here because this, the, this is run through Woodstock, family Woodstock, right? Okay. All right, so any questions about the Hodge Center? Hearing none. Uh, we'll move on to seven one eight zero, beaches and pools, page one forty-eight.
How many employees, Lindsay?
There you go.
How many staff employees do you have here, see the employees for the beach?
Uh, so this past year, I think we had, I think at the pool, we had uh, eleven. Yeah, which is not, that's not as many as we normally would have.
At the pool?
Yeah, we had enough time getting lifeguards.
And then at the beach, what's?
The beach and the pool.
That's also a lot.
That's what's together, yeah. So we, what we have to do is rotate the, the lifeguard town, you know, from between the two locations to make sure that we have enough, um, according to, uh, the health department on site.
And that's just jumping down here into revenue on pool charges. There's zero. What, what?
Um, I, I believe the, the mayor proposed, uh, to waive fees again for, for next year.
For?
For not charging at the pool. Yeah.
Nice. I'd like to hear that.
All right, are we good on that one?
Yeah.
All right, the next one is, uh, seven two one zero. This is the stadium, page one forty-nine.
It's jumping down, facility charges here, down considerably. Thirty-four thousand, thirty thousand dollars. I don't know.
Yeah, we, we just, I, I, that number, we have not come close to that number. Um, a lot of the, the groups that use the stadium are, are youth groups. Um, you know, KASL, youth soccer, um, youth football, you know, the, the fee for that is a flat one fifty rate. Um, you know, we've, we've taken in some money, but it just hasn't come close to that forty thousand.
And that's why, you know, back in the summer, when I gave that speech at the state, that's why it's important that we get this state improved. We're thirty thousand dollars. We're probably the, 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 one of the biggest treasures we have in the city of Kingston. Couple of that through, right? And, and that is why this state has to get improved, so we can try to get back in the game again, try to get some estate, events, and other events back here to the stadium. And another question, parking, parking lot records, what was that? Was that for the?
Trailways. So trailways, um,
Yeah.
requested to change their, uh, change their, the amount of spaces that they were contracted to use. Um, I think during the pandemic, they, they clearly were seeing a drop in, in, um, you know, users for the, for the bus. Um, and so that number, that number went down significantly.
Thirty-eight thousand. We got, definitely get this deep state.
All right, are we good with that one then on the stadium? Okay, then the next one is seven two four zero. This is the Zoo and Nature Center, page one fifty.
What's the capital improvements?
Um.
The state is up.
Yeah, uh.
Ten thousand dollars over ten.
Yeah, Mark, um, Mark has, he has plans to want to really improve the entrance to that, specifically the paved area where it's, um, blocked off from, from regular traffic. Um, there's been discussions about repaving that, possibly putting down actual favors, uh, repairing the fence, uh, against cars constantly back into, um, trying to, trying to just make that a more appealing entrance.
What do you mean, where the, where the, where the, uh, the barricade goes across?
Yes, uh, and so.
You're gonna try and make that road like a, uh, more of a, more appealing in there?
Uh, yes, there's been discussions of either paving it completely or putting in actual favor stones, um, but again, the, the fence.
But isn't there a thoroughfare to the upper top?
Oh, no, I'm talking about, no, not that, that's one of the exits that you're saying, right?
No, I'm talking about, when you're talking about coming in the front entrance and then going past the zoo.
Right, but during, during operation hours, it's, it's closed, uh, to drive for safety reasons.
For safety reasons, right?
Yeah, you can't get past.
No.
I know, I thought sometimes they might open it up, though.
No, only at, once, once the zoo's closed for the day, that's the only time, uh, that it's, that's the way.
How about during, uh, special events?
No, I think it's still.
Like the touch of trucks, stuff like that?
Yeah, it, it may be close to that.
You gotta come across the grass, correct?
I'm sorry?
You gotta bring your truck across the grass, right?
No, we don't, we don't bring anyone. Oh, you're saying the, for, yes, the trucks were on the, on the field, all the vehicles.
Across the grass, okay, so that's how you get across there? Is that permanently closed?
Are you saying that for the, for the event of touch a truck, all the vehicles that participated were in the field?
I'm just talking about, is that permanently closed before that now? It's no longer through it?
It's only outside of, of, um, business owners, so it opens up when, when the zoo staffs in for the day, they'll open it up so that, you know, the cars coming through and, and truck through.
Oh, they do open it?
Yes.
That's where it opens then, that's kind of good, then. Oh, thanks. So after zoo hours, they open it up, but during zoo hours, they close it for all pedestrians, right?
Correct.
Nice, okay. And they're gonna make the papers out of it?
That's one of the options that's been, been placed out there. Either way, the, the fence is the bigger issue.
But they're not gonna block it off, is what I'm asking.
Not, not permanently, that's all.
Okay, good.
All right, anything else relating to that one? If not, then, um, we can move to seven two five zero. This is environmental educator and sustainability, page one fifty-two. So I, I know, Lindsay, the salary in this one is up twenty-five thousand dollars?
Yes, so, um, one of our rec leaders is in that line, Casey. Uh, she's part of the, um, CSA increases, um, our environmental specialist. Um, previously, that position was, um, seventy, seventy-five percent in our budget, and twenty-five percent was in engineering. Uh, the mayor had, um, proposed this year that this person come back into parks and rec completely.
And is the environmental specialist one, is that, um, a new position?
No, that, uh, I believe, um, I don't know when that position was originally put in. It was, um, Ellie, Ellie Gornstein currently occupies that position. Previous to that, I was a show poster.
Okay.
Yeah.
Wasn't he part-time with that?
No, he was, he was, um, split between engineering and, and parks and rec.
Yeah, so that's what I mean, he was part-time in parks and rec.
Oh, yes.
Do you remember if it was halftime in each department?
What was that?
Do you remember if it was halftime in each department?
No, uh, seventy-five percent in parks, twenty-five percent in engineering.
My specialty is picking the, uh, parks and rec, uh, department.
Uh, so.
And what do they do for parks and rec?
Yes, I'm trying to find.
Oh, she's here. And recreation.
Um, so Ellie, Ellie is actually, um, really versatile. She, uh, she, she goes far beyond, uh, her, her, uh, day-to-day responsibilities. She assists even with, uh, more, uh, recreation. More, uh, recreation and she supports a lot of our senior programs, um, she works with, um. So, um, she's working with the organic diversion plan, um, she focuses on legislation, the anti-identical ordinance. Um, she's, she's worked with the climate smart commission, um. She's worked with this as a city fleet manager, um, you know, she coordinated with a lot of our staff on a lot of, uh, sustainability and environment, uh, mental issues. Um, part of her role was, uh, with, with engineering, um, she attended GPI falls. Uh, she worked on some invoices for TRGAL mitigation project. Uh, but most of her, her time and energy has been spent, uh, with our department. Um, working on the EV charging stations, uh, CCI, like the law, uh, assertive in your, in your communities. She's, she pretty much, uh, just kind of fills in wherever the gaps are and works closely with Julie. Trying to make sure that, that we keep up with, with the different initiatives and, uh, you know, proposals.
Great, thank you, uh, anything else on, uh, that line?
Um, I don't know, I just want to mention the email that I, I sent out, um, I believe I sent last week, uh, there, we just needed to make an amendment. To the expense and revenue line for this, um, to, uh, take care of the community preservation plan grant award that we recently got. Read that, or, or you, you want me to, I think.
That was on it?
Yeah, well, I sent it to, um, to the old man.
That was last week, Lindsay?
Yeah, I think it was on Monday.
Did you include a committee report with that?
Oh, no, I wasn't aware that I needed to. I can, I can put one together if necessary.
Uh, John, do we need a committee report for that, or is that something we can just, um, add in here?
I, I think you can add it in at the wrap, uh, one of the wrap-up meetings, I do have a note on it and I have the account number, so when we're ready. You know, we can prepare that and I can prepare it.
Okay. Great, so we'll let that stand like that. Um, then if there's nothing else on environmental education and sustainability, the next line is seven three one zero, youth programs, page one fifty-four. So, uh, Lindsay, why the drop in, um, pay for seasonal employees, it looks like it's going down three thousand one hundred dollars?
Uh, yeah, so we, um. You know, we're, we're trying to focus a lot of our, um, energy on full-time positions such as the labors. Um, and so the hope is that by filling the, some of these labor positions, that the seasonal, some of the seasonal positions will, um. Be needed as much, um, it was really hard to try to fill some of these positions this year. I think all across the board, uh, we have a real hard time with seasonal, part-time positions. People are really, you know, either looking for full-time work or helping, and it, it was a real challenge.
Gotcha, okay, anything else on youth programs?
Yeah, um, with the seasonal employees, or just employees in general, with the youth program, since they are youth programs.
Yes.
Um, do we hire a lot of young people?
Yep, um, for, for these programs, like our tennis coordinators, they, they come from this line, um. Uh, for the runabout center, um, we, we use them with the zoo, but, uh, mostly for, for tennis camp, uh, pool. Those are all young individuals. And on top of that, we work closely with, um, with, um, uh, the county, they, they always provide a program where. Uh, kids that, that need and want experience working in, um, in a job and, you know, that, that. It's, that's covered by them, but, um, we do offer those additional opportunities for, for people to, if it's to have a job during the summer.
Yeah.
Get that experience, whether or not.
Good.
Yeah.
Anything else on that line then? Could it be, could it be with the last line here for, uh, Lindsay?
Oh, man.
Seven six two zero, adult recreation, page one fifty-five. Lindsay, how often are adults recreating here in Kingston?
I will say that, uh, we are trying to. We are trying to, uh, come up with more diverse programming, uh, for, not just for adults in the community, but all across the board, seniors, youth. This year, it was just, you know, a blessing to be able to get back into doing softball. That's probably our, our biggest, uh, adult, adult, uh, program, I would say, uh, and so, you know. With new guidelines and safety protocols, it's, it's been an adjustment for everyone, but, um, you know, I think that is just taking some getting used to.
Okay, um, I've had some people saying they miss the old bus trips, is that just, uh, completely out the window now, or?
No, that, so that, that comes out of the, um, uh, the aging line, uh, and so you'll, you'll see, we actually requested an additional thousand dollars. Uh, we do, we do hope to bring back the bus trips next year. And, um, my calculations actually showed that we would need more money to be able to do that.
Uh, so that was in that first item, we looked at the programs for the aging?
Yes, and unfortunately, we weren't, we weren't able to, to do the bus trips, uh, this year with everything going on. Um, but we are hopeful that we can bring it back next year, especially with, um, with our newest rec leader, we now have a full, a full team, uh, to be able to, to run these programs. And the seniors are slowly but surely starting to feel more comfortable coming back into the building. Uh, we have, we have our home crafters that started coming back in September, uh, ceramics were hearing out to come back, unfortunately. The instructor had a, had a family death, um, but I'm sure she'll be reaching out in, uh, in the new year to start back up. Line dancing started back up, so if you ever want to hear some nice eighties music, seventies music, come nearby early in the morning. You'll not be disappointed.
Where's that?
In the, in the summer, they take up, uh, half the gym and they're, they're there for long, yep, they have a good time.
I try to not remember the seventies and eighties, but that's just me.
I didn't have the pleasure, so.
All right, rub it in, Lindsay. Remember you're doing that before we've considered your, uh, capital plan here.
Right, if it makes you feel better, I have gray hair too, running.
All right, uh, so there's three items, parks and recreation on the capital plan here, the first one is a compact utility tractor with bucket. What's that for? Is that, uh, can we charge people to ride on that?
No, so these are the items, um, specified for the rail trails, um, um, to be able to better maintain those, uh. To get up to, to get the, the branches and any, um, any, uh, limbs. Um, the weeds and areas that go beyond a, a basic weed whacker or mower, which is essentially what we're using now.
Oh, so like a cherry picker then? That's what you mean by bucket?
Yes.
Okay, all right, questions about that, anybody?
Are these all, all of the big, uh, state contractors anymore? These things, these items?
Uh, Kubota, I believe is the, it's a good question, actually, I. Yes, I, I actually think E W helped us identify this specific, these specific items.
Yeah, they were already, uh, state, uh, uh, you get this, you get these items in state contract or something like that?
I don't know if they're on state bid.
Yeah, I don't know if they are, but I mean, they would, we'd have to follow the term and manual, so. Yeah, so, yeah, we'd have to follow the manual. It's either walk the contractor, we have to get it or get the books depending on the dollar.
You guys have the second one, right? Yeah?
No, I was getting there, utility vehicle with heat and AC, I'm presuming, Lindsay, that means that, uh, heat and AC for the driver?
Yeah, uh, so this would be for, yeah, if, um, specifically in the winter with snow removal, um, on the, on any of the trails or, um. Or in particular by the, the zoo pathway that we were discussing earlier, um, it's, you know, it's.
This would be like an ATV or something?
Not quite, um, trying to see if I can pull up a picture of it, if that's helpful. Part of the CFA process required us to show examples and, and images, so we didn't really have that.
So does this have treads or wheels?
Uh, wheels. Which one are we talking, we're talking about the utility vehicle?
The one for twenty-one thousand dollars.
Kind of like a Polaris range or something like that, I think.
Yes. Can you see this okay?
Yeah, yeah, I've got one up here.
Oh, you have?
Thank you. Um, so it looks like it's a cut above a, uh, an ATV. But so you're talking about getting one that's got, um, that's closed in, that's got a closed-end cabin so that you can have some comfort for the driver?
Correct, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Will it have a sweeper on it?
Yep.
Oh, nice, is that, is that all included, Lindsay?
Well, that one's, the tractor has, no, the, well. We got a pool based on those attachments with it, um, a lot of these, there's interchangeable parts that can come with it based on needs. Um, but I, I believe the tractor that we have, the eighty thousand, that's why that one is so retired, that comes with the broom, the sweeper, um. Uh, the other one. Yeah, the blower, the tractor, that one comes with the blower, the broom, loader, the mower.
I mean, these, this would be used for distance trails?
Primarily the trails, yeah.
The mower, too?
Uh, yeah, we have to get, um, you know, some of those parkland areas, especially going towards Delaware, that grass space, all that, um. You know, our, our guys are using. Not equipped for, to be able to maintain that.
Okay.
Yeah. And this would cut down the time significantly.
Now, do you sit through and, and you, you, you have to take care of all that?
Currently, yeah, the trash cans, the, um, the sidewalks.
That's gonna go back to, to, to.
Yep.
Thank you.
In the coming year, right?
Yes, actually, yeah. We'll still assist with, um, snow removal, the, of in the parking lots, especially in the midtown, uh, area.
And so the last item is the tractor with loader and attachments?
Yeah, that's the, that's the one with the, um, the attachment, the broomer, uh, the, the broom, the sweeper.
Okay.
And blower.
All right, any questions, issues, anybody wants to bring up relating to any of these? Capital plan requests? If not, anything else you want to tell us, Lindsay?
I thought, um, I heard from some constituents about the pickleball courts.
Yes.
Is that, um, somewhere to be improved?
It is, um, we're, we're trying to, uh, nail down a couple of, of quotes and estimates, um. Originally, that was proposed as part of the, uh, the list of rec trust, uh, rec trust fund items. Um, but it turned out that to be more costly than originally expected.
I didn't hear what you're talking about.
For the, uh, pickleball courts, a little apart.
They need to be refurbished.
They need to be completely redone, I think the original request was to have them resurfaced, um. Uh, according to D W and various contractors, I would be putting a Band-Aid on it and we'll have to redo it all over again in probably about five years. So we are looking at doing a complete overhaul and completely, um, creating the, uh, the courts.
But where would the money come from for that?
We're hoping, uh, the rec trust fund, the majority of it, you know.
Any idea what a pickleball court costs?
Well, that's what we're looking for, um, trying to give, um, an estimate or two, um, we, we've looked at what it costs to be the, um. Uh, the tennis courts at Forsyth, um, and it, it was a lot of money, I do think that, that's a larger space, but, uh.
So those are not in the list right now?
It's, it's on my, it's on my list for next year, I mean, that is on my.
Your tennis courts too?
Oh, the tennis courts, yeah, we're, we're looking at, uh, yeah.
All right, so, uh, you know, Lindsay, overall, uh, this requested budget of yours is about three-quarters of a million dollars higher, uh, than last time. So, uh, we're just keeping that in mind as we look at everything across the board here, uh, and consider this, so thanks for being here tonight. Uh, thanks for sitting with us for so long, uh, and, uh, giving us all the details.
I think Pat had something more to say.
He always got something more to say.
Sorry, running. Your wish list, what's on your wish list, what would you, what would you, if you had, if you had, we have all the money in the world, what would you buy?
Thank you for asking, I, my wish list would be to completely, uh, renovate the Annie Murphy Center. Uh, there is a serious safety concern, um, with ledgers festus throughout that entire building, uh, Steve has been part of walkthroughs with contractors and, um. I don't even want to think about how costly that project will be, but it is, it is a safety concern, um, we have several programs in that building. Um, most importantly, our administrative offices upstairs are deteriorating, the walls, it's paint chipping, um. There's definitely left paint all throughout that building, but, um, my ceiling in particular is, pieces are starting to fall off. There's been water damage over the years and everything's just kind of been patched up and just Band-Aids here and there and so, um. But it is, it is a, that, that one's a big one, but it needs to happen, it's just gonna fall apart otherwise. Um, the lorm park, pickleball courts is on my list, uh, the Hudson Park pavilion repair, uh, that's another one, we have our camps, uh, that are, that are. That one is, um, you know, that was originally a rec plus fund project, um, I believe we didn't have anyone, any, um, anyone who bid on that one, so we're gonna try again, but.
Good, that's, thank you.
Yep.
How is the, um, gymnasium serviced in there, is that maybe replaced too?
The, for the midtown center?
Yeah.
It gets resealed, um. I believe it used to get resealed every year, um, after speaking with, uh, our maintenance supervisor and the contractor, um, that, that does it. Uh, they, they suggested every three years is appropriate, uh, which means it'll be due for, for, um, a touch-up, I guess, this summer, I don't know.
It is in good shape?
Yeah, we've, we've had, uh, some.
And the stage in the back there, is that in good shape?
Um, the stage has not really been utilized much recently, um, our boxing program hasn't returned, uh, we don't, we don't often go back there, the, the ceramics program is, is in the back, um, room there. But we don't, we don't particularly use the stage, uh, for much. Um, but the, the walls, the walls are good, the bigger issue.
The walls are chipping.
Yep, yes, and, uh, the bathrooms, that's, that's another big piece, the kitchen, um, as I mentioned, is, is, uh, gonna be addressed in, in the coming year. You know, we, we've been working with no. Um, you know, we, we've been working with Novo, they're, they're providing a gift to the city to, uh, redo the kitchen.
Nice.
We are part of our city E G project, we're providing the equipment, the, um, you know, the, um, supplies that will actually be in the kitchen.
How much is that a gift?
I do not have that number yet. I know the contract is, is going back and forth between, uh, Novo's attorneys and our, our court counsel. Um, I know that we had, I think, 52 or 51 to spend on the equipment. Uh, you know, the stove, the range, things like that, um, but uh, but they're taking care of the asbestos removal, they're, they're taking care of wall construction.
From which building?
Uh, anywhere.
Oh, but you just said the Annie Murphy Center is filled with problems.
Yes, outside, this is, so the kitchen, they're.
Just the kitchen.
They're only taking care of the kitchen, yes, yep. Um, and the hope is for that to, to be utilized for community programming, classes, seminars. Um, you know, we'll be responsible for, obviously, scheduling and, uh, maintenance and everything else, but, um, you know, it's, it's, it's gonna be great once it's done. It's just cashing off a little bit of a part of it.
This is, this is another one of the, it's, to me, it's like the stadium. You know, this is like one of the gems of our city. It has just fallen into so much decay and repair to the point where, I mean, I think it's dangerous. I mean, there have been pieces of brick that have fallen from the top, which is probably a 75-foot drop. I mean, God forbid that, that hit anybody. I mean, that would be the end of the, the auditorium.
Lindsay, why don't you put this in your budget?
Well, I suggested it, um, in discussions with the mayor about what my goals were. He asked what my, my goals were, wish lists. Um, and that, that was listed as, as one of my priority items.
Anyway, I did want to ask, is there any, any chance we could get some of that, uh, American Rescue money for, for something like that?
Uh, the ARPA, the DARPA funds. So I had an interview with the consultants, I think every department had did, um, and that was, that was, uh, my top item on that, on that interview. Yep.
I know you weren't highly involved, but before the whole COVID thing, you know, I was working with Kevin, we actually had people down from Albany, you know, with historical renovations company. Just to kind of give us some ideas.
Yeah.
You know, we had thought about stripping the, the plaster.
Yeah.
Then, but actually that can't be done.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, there's.
That was kind of disappointing.
Yeah.
I thought that would look really cool.
Yeah.
But, you know, the building still has so many really cool features to it.
Absolutely.
You know, and, you know, it's a shame that, I mean, I don't even want to, the balcony, like, I'm afraid to go out to the balcony.
Yeah, the balcony is, uh, it, you know, it, our past engineer, Ralph, um, you know, he did say that it's, it should not be utilized for, for seating. People should not go on there. He said it's okay for storage, but, um, we, you know, we really, we don't utilize the balcony, um.
When's the last time anybody ever sat up there for? Probably when Billy Costello wore one.
Yeah.
Probably the last time.
Yeah, and it's, and even, you know, I don't know what kinds of repairs have to happen for that to be, you know, used again. It might just be that it's, it's more ceremonial than anything. Santa, Santa was the last person to go up there.
Which one?
Santa Claus.
Upstairs, oh, yeah.
And he comes and waves to the kids.
Was it an armory or what was it?
Yes.
It was an armory, right? Yep. What, what, actually, there is, there still is a shooting range.
Yes.
Down in the basement.
Oh, yeah.
The wall is all.
Bowling, Alex, then?
The, the police used to use it.
Are there bowling, Alex, then?
What?
Bowling?
I don't think there was bowling.
Um, okay, can we, uh, bring this back to the budget?
Killjoy.
Yeah.
Just tell us wish lists.
Yeah, the, the shooting range is not my wish list, I will say that now. I actually don't like going in the basement, so, but yes, if I had to choose one, one major item that, you know, that I would like to focus on, um, it would be, it would be the.
Right, sure.
Um, and I don't know if anyone has any other questions, but I just would like to address you all and thank you, um, for your support. It's been a tough year all around. Um, you know, I am very proud of my department and trying to continue with the, the mission and the commitment towards the community. Um, pandemic has been tough on everyone and I think what we saw was, you know, how much people depend on recreation, our parks, our green spaces, our, our facilities. Um, and now that I'm in this position and, and have taken on even a larger role, I'm, I'm realizing, um, you know, how special this department is and how much we have to offer. And so I thank you all for your consideration and, and hope you, you see the good work that we're, we're all trying to do.
Thank you.
You're doing a good job.
Thank you, Lindsay.
You're doing a good job. Thank you, and I know you, you're pretty worn.
And we all, we all can.
All right, thanks again, Lindsay.
Thank you.
And, uh, you can stay and listen to the next budget hearing if you want to, but.
I, I thought about it and, and it is very. However, I do have a toddler that I have to attend to.
Gotcha. All right, uh, thanks, I see Alyssa here, um. I'm gonna call a two-minute break, so everybody take a minute to stretch, get a glass of water, do something, just two minutes though, okay?
There's some vouchers here that, that have to be signed.
Oh, give me some.
Posted a video with him driving the truck.
Yeah.
You can see how, see. Totally, so you can't let the, you gotta be the one that's in control.
Good money.
Oh, yeah, it's really good. It's more than, it's more than I did.
Right. Good.
Why they came and sent them?
No. You know.
Oh, the $10,000?
Because of the addition.
That's right, yeah.
So with the beginning with $10,000 happening?
Yeah, that was.
I don't understand the raise thing. He's not, I don't know, what he's thinking about it or not? Remember that you all are, um, live. That's more than two minutes.
Yeah.
I'm back.
We're back.
All right. Where's Steve?
Giving the guy to the clerk.
He went and, maybe he went and got the car. Where, where's, oh, she's on, is she calling?
I think at least she's on.
Yeah, she's, she's on the, uh, she's on the Zoom call here.
Okay.
I think she'll only appear when she talks.
Oh, I see. Is that why we only see you?
Unfortunately.
You can't see me?
No, well, now, now we can, when you talk, we can.
Oh, okay. I haven't, uh, seen it on the other end. I can, I can see everybody.
I would think, maybe sometime we can ask Kyle, because I would think there would be a button we could push where you could see all people who are in on the Zoom call.
Yeah, I, I didn't know that you couldn't, you can only see the person when they speak, that's interesting. I think it's called speaker view. There is a button where you can do like a gallery view or something like that.
Right.
Yeah, but we're so new with this, we don't want to push the buttons because we might make the whole thing go away.
Right.
Never ends. All right. I know what I'm getting some people for Christmas, damn watch. It starts on page 16 with the common counsel. Actually, it starts on 15. Line 1010. All right, where's Dawn and Steve?
This is what happens when we give breaks.
All right, well, let's propose that, uh, your salaries get decreased. All right, so we're, uh, page 15 of the book. This is line 1010, common counsel. Steve Shabbat, do you have a proposal to make on the, uh, we're gonna be office supply line?
Let me get to it here, come on, Eric. You're a tough taskmaster here. All right, um.
Page 15, common counsel.
That's us. Yes, I, I would.
What page is this?
16. 15, 15, that's right. Well, my proposal is, I would like to see us get, uh, computers to use for our work. Um, I am really displeased with the fact that I'm using my personal computer, uh, for my older manic duties. Um, I'm using my personal phone for older manic duties. Um, I, I think it's really poor, I'm, I'm really surprised we're even allowed to do this, to have work-related things, confidential information, intermingled with our personal information on our personal computers. I don't know how everybody else is, I mean, I don't, I don't have a.
Would a laptop be good? A tablet? Or a tablet, a laptop?
Well, I, I talked to Kyle about this. He's not in, you know, because I said something like, you know, yeah, what, what they call it, the little Chromebooks, I said, he's, he is not real thrilled with that. Um, so the price kind of escalated a little bit near our, uh, he said we could get them through the state and he said it would be really nice. And the problem with the smaller ones, you really can't update them.
No, but like a nice laptop, like a Dell.
Well, he's saying, he quoted me a figure of roughly about 800 bucks is kind of a ballpark figure.
For a laptop or for a tablet?
No, for a laptop. You know, that would serve us to do Zoom meetings and, you know, have enough memory on it for us to, you know, to use it.
So we're talking about $7,200 there?
Yeah, give or take. I mean, you know, that was just a, you know, a ballpark figure.
Well, I, I don't know that everybody would, would want or need or accept one. I, for me, it would complicate my life, so I would say thank you, but no, thank you. It might not be a question. I think there's an issue of security we should think about. There's also the problem of all that paper. We're just, you know, one of the offsets here would be reducing the amount of copying that gets done. Uh, that would be less stress on the clerk's office. Uh, to some degree, it would be less stress on our printing costs, less stress on using paper.
And I, and I do think about, I, we see it more and more, we're getting foiled for things, we're getting asked about our emails. Um, you know, and to tell you the truth, I don't want to turn my personal computer over to somebody who has foiled it. I mean, you know, that, that is all my personal information on there. I don't want to give it up to someone, but I really have no choice at this point. Um, I mean, if a, if a judge says you have to turn it over, I'm gonna turn it over, but it has so much personal information in there. You know, that I don't, you know, I don't really want to have to turn my computer over. And plus, as Rennie said, the cost of paper, I mean, you see, our council meeting, I mean, everybody gets a half a ream of paper. You know, every, every meeting, which, what do we do? You walk downstairs and you throw it in the recycling bin. It's a, you know, it's a one-time use.
I'm in the favor, Steve, we had a conversation some, some time ago about this and, you know, I'm not seeing big changes that, especially with this COVID and the way that we kind of adopt, a lot of our meetings is just passing your hand and, you know, if somebody, you know, again, I don't know, you know, returning whatever, if we would have to hand over our personal phones, you know, if we get foil, as you said, and do we have to turn over our laptops that we use at home? Or is it simple? We're getting to some, you know, like Steve said, we're getting to some, uh, 60 situations, you know, in this new day and era that, you know, like I said, I could give my phone over. I'm not giving my personal computer over, if somebody, you know, or something like that. And you get the long time coming that nobody can ever, you know, speed to bring it off. And then we still have laptops that didn't dedicate for the common counsel and then when you're done, whoever you, you know, comes in and, you know, fights away and that person, all that information, bring this gets into the next person. I don't think that would be very difficult, hard to do. And, uh, and then you got the laptops there. If somebody doesn't want to use a laptop and they don't want to use their own computer. So we, since, you know, since, they, they understand that it is possibility, possible to make it, like a train, like a train over there.
So maybe it can be an expense, an expense allowance, you know, you're allowed up to 500 or 750 or whatever, use towards technology. You know?
Well, I don't think, I don't think the expense is the issue, I think it's the personal information that everyone's talking about. I know, uh, the county, the county does that. They assign, uh, laptops, iPads to its workers. They, well, at, at least in my department, and they, they tell me, never use your personal phone for county bills for business, never. And, uh, but we, we sit here in meetings pulling up emails on our personal phones and sending emails and right from our own devices. So I think that is a, that's an excellent idea. It runs through the IT department. The IT department assigns it to whomever is the older person at that time. And when you're done, it gets wiped off and goes on to the next person.
And this really hit home during the, during the. And this really hit home during the, during the COVID, because I'll be quite honest, I don't have like a big frilly computer, you know, and mine was going down a lot. And Kyle, Kyle looked at my computer. He said, you have so much information on there, you know, I mean, it can't handle it. And now I got a new computer and everything is fine. I haven't had, I haven't gone, I haven't lost my connectivity to a meeting since I got my new computer. So it's obvious that my computer was causing the issues, you know, but that's the way it is. I, that's my personal computer, you know, so I can't delete everything on it to use it for alderman business. And I don't really feel like I should have to, you know, spend eight hundred thousand dollars on a dedicated computer. But at some point in time, we're going to get caught up in some kind of legal issue and we're going to have to turn over information or something like that. And it's just, and I don't know, but you guys, I'm, you know, when I wanted, you know, my, my mail for the city, there's a lot of stuff coming in there. I don't know where this stuff is coming from, you know? I mean, it could be letting in viruses, you know, into my computer. You know, so, you know, I'm just upping the chances that something's going to happen to my personal computer by doing all this extra work on it. The paper we use is absolutely incredible, you know, that we wouldn't have to do that. All right, well, I think.
Well, we'd have to put this on the line on it. This would be all the budget wrap-up. We're going to, we decide to do this.
Yeah, but at least four of us, it sounds like, are in favor of it. So, Don, you'll keep a note of that?
Yes.
Okay, and then is, would we have to have a new line under ten ten, or could it go under office supplies?
I mean, we can create a new line, it'd be fifty-two oh five from data processing equipment.
Okay.
I guess I have a question. I was still wondering. What's the five hundred dollars in telephone? I don't, we have a telephone that produces on the council.
Tony, I think a phone probably suffice for what you need there. If you're looking for privacy, things like that. I mean, I use my iPhone, as you know, because I've said Patrick Maris' iPhone all the time the last decade and the last, over the pandemic. But I use my iPhone and that was fine to do Zoom meetings and things like that. It wasn't, wasn't a bad, a bad problem. Had to buy a little stand after a while so you guys didn't see it shaking all the time, but.
Hard to type on phones.
You could check your emails. You could send emails. You could do whatever you want from a nice phone. And you don't, and it would be, and you can put it in your pocket.
You can, but here's, like the other night, last week when we had one of the budget meetings, Rennie had his iPad and it was actually typing up amendments during the meeting.
Can't do that on a phone.
On his, his personal iPad. So there are times where you may have to make some changes to something. And to be typing it on your phone, I mean, I, because I'm a little younger than you guys, so I can.
If you're reading. Sorry, I read it.
I just said it's not as easy to do that. It's just.
It's much faster. Privacy, it's easy. It can be done. And then if you need anything, you know, obviously, we should, the council should also have more help in that, with those kinds of things too. We don't, we don't have any kind of national secretary.
I don't want to put words in Tony's mouth, but I think Tony was at, there's a charge, four twenty-one of five hundred dollars. I think that's. That's how we.
Yeah, Alyssa, do you know what that's about?
Yeah, Andrea has a cellphone.
There you go.
So everything, so just a, and all person large has a telephone?
Yeah.
I think every council number.
In the, in the budget book, there's a slight change of about 2,000 or so, a little more than that.
I'm sorry, what am I looking at here?
The ninety is up like twenty-three, almost twenty-four thousand dollars.
No, I.
I'm sorry, I'm looking, I'm sorry, my bad, looking at the wrong line.
I was looking at the individual pay.
Yeah.
For each.
I don't know where all this is coming from, but am I looking at that right?
Yeah, I'm sorry, so fourteen-ten. Line one oh one.
Yeah, I got the five on the first, wasn't there? One fifty-four.
All right, if you. If you look at. If you look at the fourteen-ten. The individual pay, each employee's pay. You have your deputy, deputy clerk. Higher salary than your city clerk.
Well, that's because part of my salary, I'm, I'm the city clerk and the registrar. So my salary comes from two different lines, it comes from city clerk and, and it's in the registrar as well.
Right now we see there's only ninety percent of our salary.
Okay.
The registrar.
And where is registrar?
Where's registrar? Fourteen, forty.
What is that?
Registrar is page fifty-five.
Register of life participants. Your case with safety, very easy thing, that's when you see. Eleven ten percent.
Okay. They're listening, it looks like your position in the city clerk office is getting a little bit of a raise. Like eighteen hundred dollars.
Yes.
Well, okay.
The eighty clerk's going up to about seventeen hundred dollars. If you've got a bilingual. Bilingual clerk. Most of them.
I can't hear you, Tony, what'd you say?
I said most of that, the increases that bilingual clerk.
Seven.
Right?
Right.
It's going from, it was zero, not, it was not there last year. And now all of a sudden this year, it's recommended for forty-five thousand. Do you hear me?
I, I, I'm not following what you're saying, so you're saying what, there's a difference of forty-five thousand?
But the increase in the salary due to the bilingual clerk?
Oh, yes, yeah, there's a, I, I do see that the mayor had recommended a large increase in her salary.
That's all part of the, the.
It is, yes, and it is something that the mayor and I discussed many times because it is very difficult.
Hold on, Alyssa, hey, no side conversations, please, it's hard enough as it is, thank you, Alyssa, go ahead, please.
Uh, so the, uh, the, the raise that the mayor recommended for the bilingual clerk is something that he and I discussed several times throughout the past, probably the past two years, it is incredibly difficult to uh, keep somebody in that position who is bilingual and who is um computer savvy enough to have that position, uh, because that person could get a job someplace else. And we had a lot of turnover in our office, um, so hoping that that position does get that raise and that we can, can keep somebody, it's very, very difficult to train somebody and have them be competent in all aspects, especially being bilingual, we have uh, a big need for a bilingual clerk in city hall. And um, the one we have right now is great and really hoping she stays.
How many, Alyssa, how many uh clerks have you, bilingual clerks have you had?
Uh, four.
Since you went.
Since, yeah, just since uh, two thousand nineteen.
And this is a full-time position?
Yes.
So that's the major change in your department there, right? Okay. Anything else about um, pay in the, in, in that line?
We asked.
The other equipment line, Alyssa, from nothing to seven thousand dollars?
Equipment line.
Two eleven.
I'm looking at the differential sheet that John sent, I don't have the book in front of me, so I'm, I don't know which one you're looking at, it says.
Yeah, so on page thirty-three under equipment, line two eleven, equipment, and that says recommended seven thousand dollars. Nothing was requested.
Oh, other equipment, seven thousand, uh. I'm not sure what the other equipment.
Oh, was that the computers for the common council?
Maybe. Oh, no, I know what that is, I'm sorry, um, that is our municipal ID machine. Uh, it is on its last leg and it can barely. I, I asked Kyle to give me a quote on what it would cost to replace the machine and it has to be replaced because local law ten says that uh, we have to do municipal IDs, so that's what that is, seven thousand dollars for a new machine.
How long have we had that machine, I feel like it's not that old.
Actually, it was the used, uh, we got it from KPA and it was their machine that they take, um. It was used for the city employee IDs down there for several years, but it's also the one that they take around and they make the children's IDs out of.
Okay.
So it's, it's been well-used. They actually can't repair that machine anymore, they no longer make those parts, so it has to be replaced.
Okay. Great, thank you, uh, anything else related in line fourteen-ten? If not, uh, then we'll move to sixteen-twenty, this is building maintenance and it's page forty-one.
Okay.
Forty-one.
Thank you.
How do you want to bring up about the docs here?
No, she got it as a part, it's a, and she has a separate name, they're the docs.
Right.
Oh, okay.
Docs.
What line is that, do you know?
I had before.
John knows, John knows every single line in this budget.
Yeah, docs is department seven nine eight nine.
Sorry, what is it?
It's department seven nine eight nine, it is on page, uh, it's on page seven. When we get to the top. Sorry, it's not seven, seven. Seven five six seven.
Seven, oh, it's seven five six.
Yes, we can go to that and get to it.
Isn't it seven five six two then?
Yes, I'm sorry, seven five six two, seven nine eight nine is visitor center. But what can we do first?
Uh. Well, we'll do them in order, we'll come back to that. Uh, so building maintenance is on page forty-one. Anything related to that? We see electricity is going up, that makes sense, I guess. Um, the contracted services, Alyssa.
So we had to add money to that line because the um, the HVAC system that our that city hall runs on, um, we needed to update the software. Uh, that is non-negotiable, that is part of, if we wanted to um, change the, the software, we would have to do, change the entire system.
Woo, okay.
They have that copyrighted.
Which is Latin for goddess over a barrel. Okay. All right, anything else then relating to building maintenance, anyone? If not, then we'll move to line sixteen-seven-zero, this is uh, printing, page forty-four.
One of the biggest things up for me, Alyssa, there's the uh, equipment rental.
The what?
The equip, equipment rental, nine nine four seven three. It hasn't changed in the last, been changed last year, but I just didn't know what it was, what it was for.
Well, we have our, uh, all the copiers are rented, we have contracts with them, there's, there's a lot of equipment actually in city hall that's rented.
Yeah, it's much more economical to rent things like that than own them.
Thank you.
All right, if there's.
Whittleage machine is rented.
Okay.
Okay, we'll see if she can make copiers first.
All right, the next is line nineteen-ten, insurance, this is page forty-seven.
Workers' compensation.
Right, those numbers are countless from the county, that's, uh, they just tell us what our share is and what our bill is and we pay it.
Just, I want to point out too on that, the uh, the prices depressed a bit during, uh, during COVID. Um, the amount that you see for two thousand twenty-two is in line with what they had budgeted from two thousand nineteen, uh, prior for several years. Workers' comp during COVID went down, uh, for, I guess, obvious reasons. Yeah, yeah, we're, we're part of the uh, the county plan.
Okay.
And uh, in the past, we've tried to price this separately and uh, we haven't been able to successfully find a, a more cost-effective alternative, so.
Thank you.
All right, next is line nineteen-twenty, uh, municipal association dues, page forty-eight. Any comments there? If not, then we'll move on to nineteen-thirty, judgment and claims, forty-nine. Any questions there? If not, then we'll move on to line four-zero-two-zero, this is the registrar, page fifty-five. I see the regular pay is going up a little bit, is that, is that related to the CSEA raises?
Yes, yes, so, um, just so you know, in, so in the registrar's office, it is, um, like I said, myself and um, my deputy registrar. And so the majority of that would be for her, and um, I had gone to the mayor several times to specifically ask uh, for her to get a raise because she, um, I felt she was grossly underpaid, um, for the work that she does.
And do you feel like this increase to forty-seven-five is, is adequate?
Um, it's certainly better than it was, yes. I, I would like to see it a little higher, I think she deserves it, but I'm, I'm happy that she's getting a raise, you know, that hopefully she would get a raise.
Uh, do you have any data um, showing what that position would make in other municipalities of similar size to ours?
Uh, that I did not get, I, I will, I can get that to you.
That would be great if we could see that. And so you're saying it's the position that's grossly underpaid?
I believe so. Okay, that position has a, a lot of responsibility, both the registrar's office and the clerk's office. We are um, the answer to the state for the, to the New York State Department of Health, for every, everything that happens in that office. So there's, there is a lot of responsibility.
Okay, uh, other questions about uh, the registrar? If not, then we'll move on, uh, line seven-five-five-one. Special events, page sixty-nine.
Randy, I'm just curious, what, how you're, you're skipping over some stuff, what, you know, what you're choosing to skip over or not, like grants management?
There haven't been any major changes in the um, in the amounts. There've been no changes in the amounts.
Um, grants management is part of the city hall meeting.
Okay, thanks.
Contracted services went up a little bit, Alyssa.
On page what, seventy-something?
Sixty-nine.
Thanks. Contracted services?
Contracted services, four thousand dollars. No, I just don't, I just question what, what's, what is contracted services there?
Uh, I believe that is, uh. That would be the part of the HVAC system. That we are looking to uh, put out to bid for a different system that I've been here for in front of you. We have a lot of repairs. And if we have it repaired, then uh, they can charge for it, so.
A lot of special events.
I'm sorry, a lot of what?
Well, special things.
Special events?
Yeah, that's the, that's what we're at now, special.
Okay, yeah, so the special event is the one hundred and fiftieth anniversary of city hall, which is happening this May. Um, and uh, so I'm part of a um, committee. Citywide committee that is organizing different events to um, celebrate that event.
So is that, what is that, the air conditioning? No, I can't see, oh.
It's a different line.
Yeah. Okay.
He asked me about contracted services and then he immediately asked me about special events, so that's, that's what I was addressing. So, May twenty-ninth, eighteen seventy-two, just so you know, that was the, uh, one hundred and fifty years ago, was the merging of the village, villages of Kingston with the village of Rondow and the hamlet of Wilbur, which created the city of Kingston. So we will be having um, many celebrations throughout the summer, starting in uh, I believe the kickoff will be May thirteenth because May twenty-ninth falls on Memorial Day weekend.
And then the next one is um, seventy-five-sixty-two docs. Tony, you wanted to speak to that one?
I had a conversation with you, so, and I had a conversation and with the current uh, DC of the city. And uh, yeah, from what he is stating that uh, he was looking to get some money, but, and from, from the city engineers, the docs are on their last legs, he might say, and so until they're approved and they don't want to put that money into new electric there. So what, um, a person that she leases it right now, was asking, and if we can add ten to twelve thousand dollars and to this budget, and therefore it would be able to go out and have the city carpenter be able to fix three more uh, docs down, or sections of the doc that need improvement, and they're, you know, ready to fall apart. And if these docs fall apart, nobody's going to be using these boat slips and then, you know, open ourselves up to liability. So he's saying about between nine, twelve thousand, somewhere in there, and a foot of wood, they replaced some last year in sections, and so he's saying if he gets more natural carpers, for the wood and the other supplies, he can fix three more sections of the, of the docks now. This is a revenue generating basically, you know, bringing people through the city, in summertime to the docks, and so more we can improve the docks and the depth. So that, that this increase in construction, materials supplied.
Well, it sounds necessary to me, what do y'all think? Thumbs up, okay. Ria, Steve, any comments, Don?
Yes.
In favor, okay.
That's something we talked to, again, I can watch it back up. Yeah.
I mean, the main question's going to be, you know, uh, if we can put ten thousand dollars to that, where do we get it from? All right, so that's something to be looking for uh, in advance of the budget review and wrap-up.
How much did you say?
Ten thousand was the amount Tony was proposing?
Yeah, well, I said, I said it, I said the wood price, wood was going up, so he's saying we're between at nine and twelve thousand dollars, we're there. Uh, fix three sections.
Well, then we should go for fifteen thousand because we know how these things actually go up when you start to put them out for, for bid.
What is it to go off the day, I mean, right? No, the carpet, our city carpet would appear, I guess, I did, by the line, the money, the budget for him to be able to go out and get the um, the materials of these.
Okay.
Wood, you know, wood and nails, it would have to go up today, right?
We can wait, if the city's still getting it now.
Why haven't you just made it sort of a normal thing if we have docs? Go look for money.
The wall's not yet, it's not, it's not the, it's not the line, that money's not in the budget.
It should have its own line, uh, if we're doing anything. Another fine.
Man, that's not something that could be, has to be prepared up here, and these ones again, from conversation this on there. They're, you know, they've seen it out, it's really, you know, really, it ties them down, some of these sections.
All right, we're good with that then?
Where are we going next? Not in the business.
That's the last one.
That's the last thing?
Well, there's line, John, where is line seventy-nine-eighty-nine? Oh, I see visitor center, page seventy-one.
There's nothing there.
Yeah, no budget.
I'm selling that, right?
Yeah, we got rid of that.
Yes. Backs of the building.
That, right?
Yeah.
Is that sold already?
No, I mean, at, at, at this point, um, you know, I'm, I'm not optimistic that that sale's going to happen before the end of the year, so. But at some point, whether it's part of this process or when we get into next year, uh, we need to leave some funding for that.
Okay, we're good with that then? Alyssa, is there anything else uh, in your review that we need to redress here?
No, but I thought Don wanted to talk about his uh, furniture proposal.
Yeah, just, is there a capital plan here?
No.
Well, that would, that's what this would uh, be, you know, fit, is a capital plan to improve the building in line with our May twenty-ninth, he said, twenty-third and one hundred and fiftieth anniversary. You know, I was proposing a capital improvement of interior carpet, paint and furniture. And we got a quote from a designer furniture company that has a, of the furniture on estate contract, they came in at seven hundred thousand, which is a big number that would need to be discussed. About whether that's a bond or.
My, my thing, hoping is just that, if, if departments want furniture, then they should be putting that in their budget. We should need capital improvement to, and to change furniture, that might, not all the furniture is absolute, absolute. That we're going to go, is change all the furniture in city hall, when some of this doesn't need to be changed. My feeling is, if, if a department wants.
But they don't, they don't pay that way.
Their budget, or they should be putting.
Can I, can I just, um, can I just tell you what typically happens? Uh, so normally, if a department had wanted something in their, within their office, then yes, Tony is correct. They would, they would budget for that themselves, and that's something that they would, most, I think most departments have a line already in their budget for office furniture or supplies or whatever it is that they need. Um, I would never, you know, this, the building falls under my job description. But with that being said, I would never go into another department's office, I wouldn't go to John Tilly and say, I think your office needs new furniture. Um, if John wants furniture for his office, John will get furniture for his office. Uh, however, again, with that being said, there, there is some areas in city hall that really could use some new furniture and that, there's a few areas that it would be considered common areas that the public goes to. Um, where you're sitting right now just happens to have very good carpeting and, and very nice furniture. Conference room one does not, conference room two is embarrassing if you go in there, what the furniture looks like. Uh, it looks like anything that is about to be thrown out is in conference room two. Um, the mayor's conference room has some furniture that is literally falling apart. Uh, so those are the three areas that I would identify in city hall that um, would be common areas that are in need of new furniture. Um, before the, but, when the budget process first happened, this, you know, when we were told in summer to start preparing our budget, I did come up with a ridiculously large wish list for city hall, and that included um, re- replacing all of the carpet. And that included um replacing all of the carpet in the entire building except for chambers. Um, because if you look down, I think that carpet is in pretty good shape. Um, I, we did reach out my office, we reached out to many, many different companies locally, asking them to come in and give us a general idea because I had initially gone um presented in my budget 100,000 dollars, which John Tuohy um correctly told me was going to be way too little. So uh I did try to get different um businesses to come in and give us an idea, knowing and it, we're very upfront with them, that we're not hiring them, we're just trying to get a general idea so that I could present it in the budget. Most places did not show up for their appointment. Uh, we did have one come in and the, the number that he came back with to replace again, all of the carpet in City Hall, remember, none of the hallways, of course, the bathrooms also do not have carpeting and not chambers. And that number was 170,000 dollars. So when I did meet with the mayor the first time, he did ask me to prioritize uh what I felt really needed to be done from that wish list. And the one thing that I had, had on there that, there's a couple of things, but the one thing that really, really needs to be done is replacing all of the faucets in all of the bathrooms because that, none of the faucets are touchless faucets. And coming out of this pandemic, uh, we really, you know, we really need to have the touchless faucets. The, the ones that are in there now, you have to hold down because the water, if, if they're, they're old, they're supposed to, the water's supposed to continue to run for a little while, but they really don't. And the water does leak all over the place uh, uh, where it's connected to the, the sink. So I did get a number on that and that is in the budget for um, under uh building maintenance, that it ended up being about 10,000 dollars to replace every faucet in City Hall. Uh, the other thing that we did try to get some numbers to repaint um all of City Hall and we did not get anyone to show up for that. So then I turned to um our city um construction person, Eddie Boyle, asked him to come in and walk through City Hall and again prioritize what parts needed, really need to be painted. The entire building doesn't need to be painted. Do we want it to be painted? Of course we do, but you know, again, there's difference between needs and wants. The bathrooms particularly on, if you're in my office, the, the ladies' room, which is right outside of my office, has a tremendous amount of water damage. We had several leaks happen in the, in the HVAC system, in the um up on the attic and those, those pipes leaks down through the men's room, which is right next to Andrea's office, and then down into the bathroom next to my office. And if you go in there, you will see that the wall, it's, it's terrible. We have the, the ceiling uh panels removed so that it can get air circulation so that we don't have a mold issue and fortunately we do not. However, the water, at one point, it was like, it looked like a faucet was running down the wall. Um, and we've had, you'll see, again, the service contract fees are high because we've had to uh emergency where we had a call and have that fixed. Uh, but it did do a tremendous amount of damage to the ceiling and the walls in the bathrooms. So that really um needs to be repaired. And so I did have Eddie Boyle come in and walk around. And there are areas of City Hall that he can paint and, and make repairs, but it would need to be done on the weekend, which means that he would, you know, that would be overtime pay. Um, you'll see in my office, there is, I think, 500 dollars in there for overtime. I did ask him, uh, you know, to give me an approximate number of hours he thought it would take to do the repairs in the two bathrooms and a few areas of City Hall that really, really needs to be repainted. And um he did not give me that number. So there's 500 in there, but I don't think that would be enough for overtime. I don't know what his overtime hours are, uh, you know, what his pay is for overtime. But um if he were to do that on a Saturday, then he would, uh, of course, with his contract being titled to overtime.
Do you have a sense of, uh, I mean, I, I think there is definitely a problem with the furniture in the two conference rooms. Um, well, I guess three conference rooms, you said. I'm not sure about what's falling apart in the mayor's conference room, but the uh, there's a real mismatch between chairs and tables in these upper conference rooms.
I, I did not then pursue it because um then after that conversation with the mayor, Don had um come in and, and said he was, he had a proposal for furniture. So I, I didn't go any further with that because I wasn't sure exactly what Don had in mind.
Okay. Let's, to respond to some things Tony said and, you know, good points. Um, you know, I don't know that a department head is going to o- often think about the employees' workspace as much and especially when they're thinking about a raise or, or something else that they need and maybe they don't want to push too much on the budget. Um, and you know, I'll pick on John Tuohy because he's here. And so, you know, John's office, the public goes not to your office, but they come into the area. And I think that, that anything that's, that the public enters, the clerk's office, you know, the, the payment office, um, it should look good for our residents, but also the people that work, even in CBDG, no, the public doesn't go in there, but they can feel good about the, the place that they work. You know, the chairs need to be comfortable. They spend a lot of time sitting at their desks. You know, this is 21, 22-year-old furniture and furniture has a lifespan. And, you know, my, my experience, when people feel good about their workspace, they feel better about their job. So um, you know, I just think it's the right thing to do every 20 or so years and we're at that point. And uh, you know, it's, it's uh, for the last, my understanding, the last 10 or 20 years, the city could never have been in a position to afford this. Um, but their times are a little bit better now and, and so while we may be able to afford to do it or some of it, I think we should, should use that upper committee.
Don, I'm gonna interrupt you there for a minute because I, I'm, I'm gonna disagree with you. Um, every work desk chair in my office is less than three years old. Um, and a couple of them are less than a year old. And I know that other department heads are very concerned and, and are very involved in making sure that their staff is comfortable at their desk. Uh, I know this for a fact because the furniture then, the old furniture, is, it's my responsibility to get rid of the old furniture, which I am constantly doing. So I know that there is a turnover of furniture within the offices.
That's great to hear. I didn't, I didn't know that. I was sort of getting my, that background from Brian Waltman, so that's great to hear. So then really, the number should be much less than that consultant said, you know, and maybe what we do is just picking chew of the conference rooms, the mayor's conference room, also the mayor's office, you know, some of those chairs are coming apart with the uh fabric. And then also um, you know, like I said before, the public areas along with the conference rooms that you're talking about, and maybe we just limit it to that um with paint, furniture and carpet and uh, and come to a number that could be after budget, you know, take care of those things.
So can I say something, please?
Mm-hmm, please.
Yeah, so I, I understand the um, you know, wanting the place to look good and at least certainly with painting and the bathrooms, you know, those, that, those are necessities that need to be done. Can't have water leaking in your bathroom and things of that nature. But um, you know, just the hefty price tag though, um, I'm concerned because we're in, we're still in a pandemic. And we have, I cannot, 700,000 dollars, even if it goes down to 500,000 dollars to make City Hall look pretty when we have people that are homeless. I, I can't, I can't wrap my mind around it. And so I think we have to be careful. Um, I think that's right. About what we're willing to spend monies on these days.
I think that's right. I think there should be much, much less than 700, but I'm proposing that we do something at all.
Um, Alyssa is um, is like uh new furniture for the conference rooms, tables and chairs? Is that something that you think we could just like buy um from a furniture store? Or is it of a certain size and whatnot that it has to be tailored to the rooms?
Um, well, I'm sure it has to, I, I, I think the size of the tables that are currently in there are appropriate for the room. Um, and I'm sure that we could find that in a office furniture supply place. I don't even know what you call it, but I'm sure we could. I, I had, I didn't look into it further because like I said, at that point, um, I, I had, was prioritizing what really needed to be done. And then Don had um come forward and wanted to replace furniture, so I didn't look into it any further. But um I would be certainly more than happy to reach out to Don and um see what other uh opportunities are out there for furniture for those two. Are we talking both conference rooms and the mayor's conference room?
Yeah, well, let's start there. That would be three tables and, you know, the appropriate chairs for them.
Hmm. Um. And I don't even know if necessarily the tables in, I think, Conference Room One, I don't know if there's anything wrong with the table. The chairs are a problem.
The, the problem is the differential. The, the, yeah, maybe if the chairs were higher, the, the table isn't ordinarily high. Um, so you know, that's just something to consider. I mean, I, I think you have all the legs off, but.
I think that is really is worth having someone who's an expert at this make a recommendation on the size, the type, the colors, the patterns of the carpet, you know, even if you do the conference rooms, they should be done well and they should be done properly. And so I would have, I would have an advisor, interior designers do that.
Alyssa, who's in charge of the conference room now? You, you, is that your uh charge?
Yes, it is. All of, all of the physical structure of City Hall.
All right, so um why didn't you put in your budget for a, a change if, if it's so terrible?
Uh, like I said, I did have a very large uh list that I was asked to prioritize and the furniture was not in the priority.
Okay, thank you.
And then I think we noted too, that Don was talking about a, a really large space lift and so you, you let that uh, you, you said, okay, we'll, we'll look at that. Okay, but uh if it's not too much trouble, if, you know, if you could just at least find out ballpark what a table for a conference room like that might cost. I mean, you know, just to get a sense of what in between what Don's recommending and what would be, to my mind, the least uh that we could change to, to make things better in those three conference rooms.
Hey, Rennie?
Yes, sir.
I just want to make a, I don't know, a, a general statement or question. Well, we have things like this. Have we ever considered uh asking the folks from Woodcrest? I mean, that's one of their specialties, isn't it? Woodworking. I mean, they do a lot of, a lot of woodworking, you know, on site. And they do a lot of, they really do a lot of good for our city. I mean, they're always volunteering to help. Um, I know they've maintained the meeting going down Broadway for years. Um, they do a lot of things for our community, you know.
You know, do it, reach out to them.
Would be nice to, at least to, you know, touch base with them. We might, we might be surprised to, you know, we might get a, a very good price. And I know that, I've seen some of the things they do. They, they do quality work.
Alyssa, do we need to, do we need tables?
I'm sorry, what?
Do we need tables in every room or do we need chairs? Is that Conference Room One looked okay, right? Is the table's a little high? Do the other conference rooms, the other two conference rooms need new tables or just new chairs?
Um, I think the table in Conference Room Two is um really bad. Um, I don't, I, I have to look at them. I don't think the mayor's table is awful. I, I have to look at it. I really, I, I know that chairs are. I'm sorry, what?
Chairs probably need to be.
The, the chairs definitely need to be replaced.
Yeah. And any table too?
Probably, yeah. I think it's a, I think the table in Conference Room Two, again, and I, I, I don't know off the top of my head because I'm not in there that much, but it is, when you, when you finish this meeting, you should walk in there and look, look around the room. It is, it is, it's embarrassing, that room.
Yeah. I don't know, maybe 500 dollars to pay the room like that? So you have 500, 500, 500, maybe more with uh labor?
I, I don't know how much. I don't know. Like I said, I did ask.
Chair? You could probably do it for 20 grand, probably gotta put carpet in, it's expensive stuff, please.
So maybe Alyssa should get estimates for these things before, she's gonna have to do that anyway before you make any kind of decision. So.
It is very difficult right now to get estimates, just so you know. I, I did, we did try to have many, many different businesses come in, several made appointments um and then didn't show up. I had only one out of four appointments for the carpeting that actually showed up. I did have one person come and walk around City Hall with me to um give me a price on washing all of the windows inside and out, spent an hour with him walking around. He never, never returned a, a number. So it, it's just, it's very difficult right now. I will do my best.
Oh, you can go.
Sounds like uh we could make some money for the city if we started an apprentice program and various kinds of building maintenance trades. All right, well, thanks for all that work, Alyssa. And we look forward to seeing if you can come up with at least a couple of numbers, but we're, we're hearing how hard it is.
Okay, and Don, does uh may, maybe the person you spoke to, if you could get information on just those three rooms?
Sure thing.
Great.
We may only need one table, Tony. They might be, will, very rarely do one table.
Okay?
Yeah.
Is that it ready?
Anything else?
Alyssa, thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, thanks for being here tonight, Alyssa. Thanks for all that you do. Thanks for keeping us virtually connected. Uh, we appreciate how you've really gone above and beyond over the last year and something with all the COVID stuff. Uh, so uh we appreciate the work that you're doing and everybody in your office too. You'll pass our, our appreciation on. All right, we'll call this meeting adjourned, 9:34. And uh there's no public safety tomorrow night, right, Tony?
No, no public safety tomorrow, no.
That's all.
So there's nothing tomorrow, right?
Yeah. No, tomorrow we have a budget. Right? Tomorrow's budget, ain't it?
Public safety was the only thing I got on my.
No, that's next week.
No, we've got the budget review.
Tomorrow, I thought we had, what do I think we have something tomorrow?
Next, the following week, we'll have a couple.
Also, we don't have anything tomorrow.
They don't, they scare them.
I thought, I thought. Yeah, tomorrow's keeps the police and uh.
No, that's next one. No, the 29th. That's moved. That was on the, that was on Andrea's initial uh schedule and I should be updated it.
But then Monday, and then Tuesday is the wrap up.
So there's just two more? Oh, I have one full.
Have fun. So Alyssa, just next Monday and Tuesday?
Yeah.
Right?
Yes.
All righty.
Okay.
Take care. Good night.